Send it to me in writing. Currently, he's looking at approximately three schools. And once we receive that, we will then deliberate on what is the feasibility. I do not believe we should close the entire district if they are asking to just utilize three schools. With our fortunate use of Duval Home Room, we could have those three schools just go to Duval Home Room for that day. So we're not even closing those schools. So that we're not putting those schools in a situation that they would need to make up a day. But I did ask him to do whatever his request is. It needs to be in writing and he needs to get it to me as soon as possible.
Is there any, was there any conversation about why we might need to use those three schools in particular? Is there?
Yes, he indicated the lack of polling locations in that particular area.
Okay.
The supervisor of elections actually came to Chairman Jones and myself much earlier this year and wanted to use all of our schools. And just had a brief discussion and he indicated that Miami Dade uses their schools for their elections. And we just, I just said, well, I need information from Miami Dade. I need to have a better understanding how that works. And then COVID-19 came and that was the end of the conversation until the governor put out his executive order.
Yeah, I knew that there had been some kind of buzz, kind of a little bit about the opportunity for, and a lot of places have voting holidays around the world where they allow folks from their employment and schools and everything to go in to vote. And I do realize it's such an important time. We want to make sure that everyone in the community does have access to a convenient polling location to vote. It's an important part of our job. The only other question I had on the calendar is the fourth quarter grades. I was looking for a little squiggly line and I don't recall seeing it. And for some reason, I feel like this past year, especially being on Duval Home Room, which was a little confusing, are fourth quarter grades complete at the last day of school or is there some other day? And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, officially, the last, that would be the last day.
Right.
That's when they would close.
Okay.
But we do work with our schools, especially seniors. Those grades have to be done well before the last day of school. So there is a time for seniors that that is the end of the marking period so that grades can get in and determining if a student is in a situation that that grade really determines whether they're graduating or not graduating. And then for the remaining grade levels, K through 11, it would be sort of that last, that last week of school.
Okay.
But if the board feels they, you want the squiggly line, we'll put the squiggly line on it.
I had, I had a couple of people reach out to me in this particular school year, which was, of course, a strange school year, looking, I think it might have been challenging and people wanted work accepted and it was difficult to get all the work done and maybe their child wasn't exactly buckled down that fourth quarter. So I think there was a lot of work that was trying to come in sort of last minute and it was unclear when teachers were stopped accepting work. So I don't know if the squiggly line helps us establish that or not, but I just wanted to be clear that I understood kind of what the final date was. So to squiggle or not to squiggle.
Any other questions? Board Member Willie, any questions on the calendar, item five?
This is Board Member Willie through the chair. One quick question. So if those adjustments need to be made with supervisor election or any other changes, we could just come back and make an amendment to this without a procedure or protocol?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, that is correct.
Thank you. That's it.
Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item five?
No, thank you.
I will add that I did have a conversation with Supervisor Elections Mike Hogan, who, as Dr. Green pointed out, wants to use the schools for voting precincts. He indicated that he wanted to wait through until next year after reapportionment so he'll know what the boundaries of the new precincts are because all the city council and school board districts' boundaries would change sometime next year when the Census Bureau numbers are in. And the challenge is having locations that are central in each voting precinct. And unfortunately, right now, we don't have schools in every voting precinct, most, but not all. So that's the challenge. And also waiting for the Census Bureau numbers to come in next year so they can redraw those lines and then he can come back. And there's no elections next year. So that's the one year so he'll have time to plan and hopefully work with the district. The next election is not until the governor's race in 2022. Item seven. Joyce.
Through the chair to Dr. Green. The task force that met to get the input for the revision, student code of conduct, is it possible to get the meeting dates and times and the attendees of those meetings?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, yes.
Okay, I'd like that. And then I know there's a presentation, so I'm not going to say the rest of my questions.
Any other questions on item seven? Board Member Willie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Board Member Smith Juarez?
No, thank you.
Seeing item nine. Joyce.
So I had, so through the chair to Dr. Green, the first question I had was concerning the gap analysis. So this is a day treatment facility and I was wondering, how do the students get to the day treatment facility?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I'm going to ask Executive Director Jackie Simmons to respond.
Through the chair, Board Member Joyce, the students get to this particular day treatment facility, the personnel actually go by their homes and picks them up and transports them to this facility.
I think they're asking, how do you get to be in your attendance?
It's how do you get to be in this facility? It is a DJJ?
We can't hear, Mr. Simmons.
It's a DJJ facility, which means that the students are court ordered by a judge in order to qualify to go to this facility.
Do the, all of the students are residing at their home or some of these students are in the DJJ facility?
All of the students in this particular program reside at home.
And the next question I had was the promotion, the promotion, the percentage of promotion from, I, when you look at the 2018, 2019, only 18% were promoted. And this past year, 50% was promoted. So I was wondering what was the, what did you implement to make such a sharp increase in those numbers?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, we continue to implement all of the district programs that we currently have. One of the things that contributes to this particular number are the amount of time students stay in the program. The judge may court order them for a particular amount of time and they may transition out, which means that their members are going to be captured with the schools that they are enrolling in. In this particular instance, we had more students that stayed for a longer duration of time, which contributed to the significant increase of the promotion rate because they were actually with us and in the facility for more time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Vice Chair Anderson?
Thank you. I was looking at the number of referrals for students and I, it looks to me, the number of students seems to have gone down for this school year. I had them dotted down, but the referrals seem to be significantly higher.
You on number item nine?
Yes.
AMI kids.
AMI kids, yep, 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 yep. Looking down at num, page, no, I don't have a page number. Just above the expected outcomes, there's a discipline table. And so I'm, I mean, we're just talking about class one, right? There's several class one offenses, but with about half the number of students, I'm just curious if we have any idea what, if there was a change in leadership, a change in the type of behaviors that we were, you know, citing? Through the chair, maybe to Dr. Green or Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Through the chair to Board Member Anderson. In this particular program, we did experience a lot of novice teachers going in from this year to than what we had in previous years based on some of the contractual changes that we have with the state, not necessarily with AMI. So you did have a significant number of inexperienced teachers that needed to have additional training with regard to classroom management, coping mechanisms, things of that nature with this set of students. So that's one of the things that did contribute to a lot of the class one, what we would consider class one and/or classroom management type of referrals.
And then does AMI also use the same, I mean, I would, I'm not going to assume, does AMI use the same process for ressortive practices and all of that that we would find in our regular buildings?
We have, through the chair to Board Member Anderson, we have begun utilizing some of our same strategies this year with this cohort of teachers as we've noticed and experienced a rise in referrals. We will continue that type of training with them. Historically, because they are a contracted outside agency, they have the opportunity to engage in those processes or not. And fortunately, through Mr. Robinson's leadership, they have had a willingness to engage.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think it speaks volumes when we're talking about having experienced staff, you know, when we think about our own schools too and our ability to recruit and retain highly qualified, experienced teachers that are passionate about, you know, being in the classroom and working with the populations that they sit in front of every day. Because these, obviously, the nature of what the circumstances are surrounding a child that would be at AMI kids. You know, if you walk into that building and you have a certain set of expectations for a child and what you're faced with, sometimes it just doesn't match up. And you need to be able to have the skills, you need to be able to have the interventions and the supports. Because this is where we start to see a disproportionate ratio of discipline for students that are exhibiting behaviors as a result of their life experiences. And we might label them unnecessarily bad or, without thinking about the trauma that they've been exposed to, without thinking about the situation, the neighborhood, the experiences that they've had in their life that make it challenging for them to meet, you know, neurotypical, normal expectations. And so when staff come in, you know, I hate to see us punishing a child over and over again, even if it's just a class one offense, because that changes the story that they have in their mind about themselves, right? So I'm glad to hear that there's some opportunity to change up our practices because that's a number that's, you know, was a little concerning to me, especially for these children that need our arms wrapped around them in a different way.
Thank you. Board Member Willie, any questions on item nine?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on nine. I know we see that the percentages of enrollment and graduation. I was, I'm wondering if we have sort of, we set goals and metrics upfront as we think about the folks who are entering each year and how those compare to where we are. And that's not something I need right now, but it'd be interesting to see like if we set a goal for 80% of the folks finishing and we get 50% or we set a goal for 20% and we get 50%, I'm just wondering like what those goals were versus what the actual outcomes and final numbers were.
Through the chair to Board Member Willie. The issue with AMI, because it is a residential, those students can be there as short as three weeks to maybe six months. It really, they are a transient population because they are there because of a court order. We don't know where their next school site would be or would they be there long enough to do all the things they need to do to graduate. So I think a better metrics would be, are we tracking these students once they leave AMI, that residential facility?
Got it, that makes sense.
Okay, Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item nine?
Just one clarification. Through the chair to Mr. Simmons, when you were speaking about the novice teachers, is that novice teachers at AMI or referrals that have been specifically tied to novice teachers?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, those are novice teachers that are at AMI.
Okay, got it. And just appreciate the discussion. I think the more that we can do to really understand what has happened to children and why they are taking certain actions, the better we will be observing them, which circles back to some of our conversations regarding full-service schools as well. And really being able to identify support services and the appropriate trauma-informed corrective actions for our kids before they internalize those external experiences in a way that is, you know, that results in them being in these alternative playgrounds. So appreciate the discussion and we'll look forward to any follow-ups that come.
All right, thank you. Board Member Joyce?
Yeah, I have one final question. The financial impact stated that in 2019, 20, and I know that this is generated by funding, how many students run the program, but the cost is significantly lower for the projected 2021 school year. And I was wondering, how do you, why do you think this is going to be lower?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. In working with the budget department, looking through the pass-through and looking at what the projected FTE is, is how that number is typically derived and that's why we put estimates. Typically, we can't control how many students the judge assigns there. And in years past, we were able as a district to assign students, we had a certain number of slots that were slated for, that we could actually have students attend. And in the last iteration of the contract, the state took that out. So the only kids that are eligible are who the judge court orders.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, item 10, Board Member Joyce.
I have two questions. So through the chair to Dr. Green. I'm, I was just, where is this program located?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Mr. Simmons. I know where, but I can't tell you. I've passed it, but I can't tell you that.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, this program is located off of University Boulevard, right adjacent to the campus of Jacksonville University.
Okay. So this is not a program that is on Duval County Public School property?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And then I noticed that the enrollment went down. However, the funding, the anticipated cost is going up. So can you, someone please explain, Dr. Green, what, why is the enrollment down and the cost up? What is that?
Again, through the chair to Board Member Joyce, again, just like the last program, it's based on potential enrollment for the upcoming school year. So their enrollment might have been down this past year and it could have been because of COVID-19 and everything. We weren't, everyone was at home, so we weren't enrolling students at PACE. We project that that will be different this upcoming school year.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Thank you. I just, as we talk about AMI and PACE, it sticks out to me, the efforts that the district goes to, to put these supports in place, these alternative environments in place to take care of students where a traditional building may not best fit their needs. And I think that it is relevant to point out that in a world of so much choice, that here as a school district, we make the partnership, we pay, you know, to help support these students with these other organizations. And I, I'm glad that Duval County Public Schools can offer this. And I know we have a couple of different iterations of AMI and we have PACE. And so, you know, when we talk about the landscape of choice and the system of schools, that this is something that Duval County Public Schools offers and I'm proud to offer that.
Any other questions? Any questions on item 10? Board Member Willie?
Yeah, I mean, number one, I mean, I've visited PACE a number of times, I think it's a great option as we've all, some of us have all seen. And I do have a question. So the money, is state funding, is it pass-through money based on FTE? Is that correct?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I've seen the work that's happening over there and I think it is great that we have those sorts of options for our, for our young ladies as well. So I'm appreciative of this item coming.
Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item 10?
No, no questions. I agree, PACE serves a niche in our district that's a partnership with DJJ and others. The private support that they have really provides a unique environment for the young women who are accessing it. And so would really encourage if board members have not visited to go over and see what PACE is doing. It's a statewide and now national network that was started here and I think is a real asset for the.
Okay, thank you. Item 11, Board Member Joyce.
So through the chair to Dr. Green. With this item in the description, it said the program will be located at Matthew Gilbert. But in the financial impact, it indicated that there was a cost associated with it last year, 2019, 2020. So I was wondering, was the program somewhere else before? And where, if it was, where was it?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, yes, it was at Northwestern Middle.
And another, two other quick questions. Why was Matthew Gilbert selected for this program and how do the students receive entry into the program?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, Matthew Gilbert was selected because the students that were once enrolled at Northwestern, the large number of those students will now be enrolled at Matthew Gilbert. And this enrollment is for boys only. It is a boys-only program and it's based on discipline referrals. So the school reviews those referrals and students that they haven't gotten to a point where we're talking about expulsion. Our goal is to prevent that. And so they work with the families, the parent has to agree to their son participating in the program.
Okay. I noticed, I know that a lot of the students from Northwestern, some of them were slated to go to Matthew Gilbert, but then the other percentage of those students were going to Lake Shore Middle. And I was just wondering why, you know, really my question was why was Matthew Gilbert selected maybe over Lake Shore Middle?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, Lake Shore Middle has, they really don't have space. So this program, they, they have to be in a location that they're kind of separate from the other students on that campus. And Matthew Gilbert, one, had a better setup to make that happen. It doesn't mean that we can't accept students from other schools, but it's located primarily at Matthew Gilbert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Willie, you also pulled item 11.
Yeah, I think, through the chair, I think this program had some really good outcomes last year. I was wondering just about the continuity and, Dr. Green, you spoke to it a little bit, but the students who were housed at Northwestern, what does that transition process look like, the continuity process look like if they are, were at Northwestern and moving to Gilbert? Is the communication happening there? That's my sort of question, what that sort of pathway looks like for those students that they're continuing in the program or if they do continue in that program?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, the program is a one-year program. So students participate for one year. So those students who participated last year, they've completed the process and so they would transition back into whichever school that they would be enrolled in.
That's funny that you said that because actually, I knew, I knew that, but I got at least one or two emails that from parents who were like, "My child's making the program another year." And I think that's a testament to the culture that's built, I know, the culture that's built within the program. But that's, that's a good thing. The second piece, I know that we, we had conversation when we brought this up before because we do have a number of our young women and our females, our girls as well, that could probably use a service like this. And I know we talked about that question. Has that been brought up? Is that conversation, is that an ongoing conversation we're having as well?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, that's why we have strong support for PACE because PACE is sort of the same type of program, but for girls only. And just to tag on what you say, I get that a lot. A lot of parents, when, once their sons are in this program, they want it to last more than one year, but it is designed to help young men do a better job with conflict resolution, problem solving. And we just need to make sure we give as many young men the opportunity to experience it. And so that's why it is only for one year.
That makes sense. I would love to get, I mean, as we, sort of this program continues to figure out where those students who did participate for a year, how they're progressing as they move out of it. I know that's some data we're probably tracking already, but that would be interesting to see, to monitor if that one year is what we need to have or if we need to think about having. or if we need to think about having more time for students to be in that sort of environment. So, but I think it's a good program. I'm glad it's, it's there. And I think it's a good, Matthew Gilbert's a good spot where especially now that Northwestern's going to be transitioning to the elementary school. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Anderson.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback quickly off what Dr. Green said about, um, the conflict resolution and problem-solving skills, emotion regulation. Those are all our executive functioning skills. And so I, I think that I would love to see an opportunity where perhaps as they transition back, maybe there's a little bit of a program that they could join in with a guidance counselor or with a support person or a dean or somebody who's at the school. They might be able to do a small group with them to work on those social emotional learning skills. I mean, that's exactly what those are. And maybe that would help cushion the transition, get them back in so it's not, you know, a, a black and white thing from, I'm at AMI where I'm getting all of this additional support and back into a, a regular ed classroom. Um, that might help bridge that gap and help parents feel comfortable that they're going to continue to get some of those supports in place, um, for these kids. But of course, I will always advocate that that is a wonderful opportunity for all of our students to be getting additional support with those executive functioning skills because that's the one area where I think children tend to struggle and can really help their academic outcomes.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Uh, Vice, um, Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item 11?
Nothing from me, thank you.
We took those up first because Board Member Joyce has to leave at 10:30.
I have one more.
Uh, 33? Item 33? You didn't pull that originally.
I didn't.
Uh...
Hmm? I don't have time to get that form.
Board Member Joyce?
Um, just, there was no attachment in my binder for that item. And so I was just, um, wondering when we might get that. I didn't get it.
Did you look in the back of section 32? Mine was in the back of section 32.
What item?
33.
Item 33.
Oh, it's in 32. It's in 32.
Okay, 33.
I have it, thank you.
All right, um, item one, uh, Vice Chair Anderson.
Thank you. So this, um, everybody's safe? We're all good? Me and our agency agreement with the Department of Health, I was looking at the number of personnel that we partner with relative to the number of schools that we have. And I'm wondering if there is any opportunity or if there's been any discussion about the possibility of increasing staff just for this school year because of our current COVID circumstances or situation. Do we know if that might be a possibility? To reduce the ratio of school nurses to schools that they serve?
Through the chair.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. Um, I will need to confer with our nursing department. I don't think so, but, um,
Maybe.
Yeah. I'll give you a little hope, maybe.
I'm just thinking about the, the landscape of what potentially might happen if we do have a child that has some symptoms or gets a fever or has to come into, um, some sort of, I'll say quarantine space or being able to help care for them. It just seems like we're going to need more bodies, you know, more people. That's what comes up for me. But I know we'll talk about this probably more later.
Um, Ms. Roberts is here. She is over the Department of Nursing, so...
Ms. Roberts.
Oh, there you are.
She heard you calling.
I'll have to hold it. Gotcha. Through the chair to Vice Chairwoman Anderson. We have, um, addition, in addition to the Department of Health nurses, we do have our own district nurses at schools that provide direct services to students. And so those are an additional 62 positions.
Uh, so that makes a total of 84? Did I just do that math right?
Yeah.
About one nurse for two schools? Would that be an accurate ratio?
Well, no, because our, um, where our, our nurses provide the direct services. So for example, at Mount Herman, there are five at Mount Herman to provide those direct medical services. The Department of Health nurses cover about six to seven schools where there isn't direct nursing services.
Thank you.
Uh, how many schools have, uh, direct services from, have a nurse on campus? And what, and what is the best practices in this area? I know we can't afford it, but what are the best practices?
The, um, I don't have the breakdown of where those 62 nurses are, but I certainly can provide it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to have that.
Through the chair, the direct services is about the student that may have a need. So juvenile diabetes, that's a direct service. So if that student was at one school, Landmark Middle School, and then they moved and went to Mandarin Oaks, that service has to follow the student. So our nurses, their primary job is to, um, support the school, but they're also there because there's some students at that school that need a direct service.
So all schools do not have a nurse on campus?
No, all schools do not have a nurse on campus. The, and, and they might have access to a nurse, but that nurse might not be located there the entire school day.
Is there a requirement that you have them at elementary schools or just the schools where students have, have a need of direct services?
It is not, elementary school, that is not a criteria if you're in elementary school. It's more about the ser, when we say direct service, that means that student needs some form of medical care that require at least a level of, a certain level of expertise. So RNs are nurses. But we do, and I hope Ms. Roberts will correct me, we do have to provide someone at the school to handle, like our clinic. So it may not be a nurse, but someone's there who, who manages that.
She's nodding in the affirmative. Any other questions on item one? Uh, Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item one?
No, thank you. Um, but glad to be having a conversation about, uh, school nurses and, and capacity of services.
Board Member Willie, questions on item one?
I'm good as well, thank you.
All right. Item two, Board Member Willie. Did you get your question answered earlier?
I think, did we talk? I'm trying to flip back to number two. Uh, I don't know if we talked about the testing calendar. I, I just have a quick question around. Are we, what information are we getting from the state? Have they sort of solidified what they believe the testing calendar is? I know we're, a lot of this is sort of depending on what, what they do. So I'm just wondering what that communication has looked like? And if we're, if we vote on this, are they going to come back behind and then create a whole different calendar? So just wondering what that, that has been, that's, that sort of communication has looked like.
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, the, I, I also have Mr. Wright here. However, for superintendents, we've not received any communication that would lead us to believe that the testing calendar would change. There are additional meetings that are occurring with, like, assistant superintendents of research and assessment. And so Mr. Wright may have a different perspective. But as far as I know, the testing calendar, it has been set. And we're not foreseeing any changes. However, if you'd asked me this time last year, I would say the same thing. And then, uh, whole different set of circumstances came about.
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, uh, at this time, the state has set all their testing windows, just as if they do every year. And so we need to move forward and plan on giving the assessments as they have set the windows.
Got it. Yeah, I was wondering too, if they have set the windows or if we're just going off the muscle memory from years past. That's great. Uh, yeah, I just, I, I just wonder if, I mean, since we, we missed some of the testing from this past school year, if there was, if that had ripple effect on what happened this year. But it seems like, uh, we'll, we'll move forward and then accordingly. Thank you for those, that input.
All right. Any other questions on item two? Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item two?
No, thank you.
All right. Moving to item five, Vice Chair Anderson. Did you get your question answered already?
I did, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item nine, uh, Vice Chair Anderson.
Um, I got my questions answered on that one, too.
Okay. Board Member Willie?
I'm, I'm good to go on that item as well. Thank you.
All right. Uh, item 13, Board Member Willie.
I, we got to the, uh, actually, let me flip. Which one, 13, I'm flipping?
That's the commencement ceremony at TIA, TIA Bank Field.
Yeah, I do have a, I do have a question about that really quick. Um, just getting some questions around, uh, the use of the stadium versus the, the field. So this is not, this is about this item, but other items as well. Um, as we're doing, uh, and assigning schools, either the stadium or having them do it at their field, is there a discrepancy or difference in the number of tickets they would get? For example, they're doing in a stadium that seats 1,500, are they getting more tickets per student than if they were in their home field or home stadium? That's a question that's come up that I just want to make sure I have clarity on.
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, no. They're still receiving two tickets.
Okay, so there's two tickets across regardless of the size of the physical facility?
That is correct.
That, that is a, that's the answer I needed.
All right. Any other questions on, uh, Board Members Hershey?
I would just like to follow up to that. In the past, I think students were allowed 10 tickets. And I understand COVID, but it is outside. Um, and then, then even some of those events were taking place at TIA Bank Field, which is a much larger facility. So, um, what, because I've gotten lots of emails from parents about that question as well, and as well as from students. Um, so just wanted to know, since, you know, we, we were doing some at the, on their home field and then some at TIA Bank. Is there a reason we didn't do them all at TIA Bank so that we could have a broader audience? Did it just come down to expense or scheduling or what?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. Lally's Place, which is just an open field. And the committee, the high school principals, all that had fields wanted it at their own field, so that was the initial. These schools that are here, they don't have football fields. They don't have stadiums. So the option was, can we get another location? And since they did not want to go to someone else's high school, Daley's Place, some event kicked us off the calendar and TIA Bank came and said, we'll help, we'll be willing to help you out. So that is how TIA Bank Stadium came about. However, it is very, a small subsection. They can only use those 1,500 seats. For many of our high schools, that would not be enough to even do two tickets. To say you're, because that's the maximum attendance they're allowing at TIA Bank. And that's why we chose, it's just the small schools or, in the case of Douglas Anderson, they do not have a stadium. So that's how that came about.
Well, I appreciate that clarity because it gives a perspective. I was thinking of some schools that are larger, such as Sandalwood, and then schools in my district where you have, you're graduating 600-plus students each time. And I was just thinking proportionately. Uh, so knowing that there's some limit on the seating at TIAA Bank Field makes it, uh, more equal, I, I guess. And so that people, and I appreciate that, that insight. Will, will tickets open up for people? Um, or do we anticipate all, the, the two tickets will be, that's going to be the limit for everybody?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, as schools have done in the past, that if tickets open up, they, they've been allowed to give out tickets. But that is a school-based decision. The schools had to map out their fields. They had to map out six feet. Even though it's outside, they still had to have six feet built into their stadium. And if they found that they could, uh, meet the requirements and have additional leftover tickets, they have the choice. It's up to that school. But the, the, the standard was two tickets.
So it's my understanding that we're also providing some streaming service as well?
That is correct. All of the graduations will be live streamed.
I think that would be important to, to advertise and make people aware of that. I, I just think we need to promote it because I think right now, at least in my district, what I'm getting is only two people can come. And, um, I think we need to let them know, yes, we're giving out two tickets, but you can, you know, it's going to be streamed and this is how you watch it. I think that that will help. I mean, we can encourage people to have watch parties for, for graduation or something. Um, I just think that would help with our, um, our communication with the community on that. There's been a lot of questions.
That's true. The, the concern is having just two tickets. I think that's why parents are...
And they don't think other people can see it.
Yeah.
And so if we can promote, you can watch it this time and this way so that grandparents and other people who have an interest in care and support students can, can watch it as well. I think that's important.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one, one, one other comment, yeah. I think, uh, this conversation is exactly right. So I totally agree. I think people, I think people believe or, or believe that if a school, a smaller school is having it at the stadium, they get more tickets because the stadium is larger. So that's the, the clarity there. And funny sort of story around it. One of the seniors was like, this will be the toughest, toughest thing I've done all school year. It's bigger now, who these two tickets are going to go to. Um, I mean, it's, because it's, it's definitely tough, especially if you have a big family or split family, things like that. So it's definitely something we want to make sure we're offering and publicizing the, the streaming and whatnot so folks can, uh, be there, at least see and be around or be a part of that, that, that moment for those seniors.
Uh, that, that's true. I've heard students who are not going to attend because their parents don't want to put them in a position of having to choose who to, which two parents to invite, especially which you have, uh, these split families, so. Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions on item 13?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 23, Vice Chair Anderson.
That's a big jump. Um, I am excited about the opportunity for this position. I wrote down in my, in my notes, um, job description. And then upon looking back this morning, I see that the job description is the third page. So my last, well, two questions. One, can you explain a little bit more about what the vision is for this role, um, through the chair to Dr. Green, and what department we will, um, see this person fall under?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, Trace, Dr. Pierce is coming forward to speak. It's in his department.
Please wipe the microphone off when you finish, sir.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, this position is in my department.
Through the Chair to Vice Chair Anderson, this position is in my department. I like to describe it this way. I think if you remember from one of your workshops a few weeks ago, Dr. Green talked about being in a community meeting in East Jacksonville, and the community leaders in that meeting really had no concept of the quality of the schools that were available to children in those neighborhoods. A lot of my department focuses on defense. There's a lot that just comes after us that we have to respond to. This is an offensive position. So, I've been trying to structure more resources going on offense, where we proactively reach out to community leaders through events, through lunches, through interactions, different tactics like that, in order to have those very close conversations that really impact perception and understanding.
I, I appreciate that. I think that, and I know you and I have had the conversation about us being able to tell our own story, and that really is from a, an offense position. And so, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity. I hope that they'll work closely with our community and family engagement, you know, department. I wasn't really sure kind of where, where it was going to fall, because I think once people know, then there's a real opportunity to engage in a way that maybe we haven't invited our community to engage before with our public school system. And I think that's really exciting to, you know, I kind of describe it as there was, I think, a period of time where we operated with the curtains closed, and we are at a time now where I think we have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot of great successes, and it's time to open the curtains, open the doors, and invite people to be a part of our successes here. So, I'm excited about the potential for this position.
Any other questions on item twenty-three? Board Member Willie, any questions on item twenty-three?
Yeah, I'm good to go. I'm in, I'm good to go on that one.
Board Member Smith-Walrez, any questions on item twenty-three?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last item is item twenty-eight. I guess, through the Chair to, from the Chair, the, the, the payment of the parking lot was, was over the three percent level, but under fifty percent, I guess. Was that something that we missed when we, when we did the request for proposal, or was that something that was discovered after that was done?
Through the Chair, I'm going to ask Mr. Suarez to address your question.
Chairman Jonesy, when we do the school paving jobs, like this is a school bus loop, we originally look at the job and estimate the existing area that's there. It was a mill and repave. Nearby trees, especially ones close, you really try to keep trees there. You don't like to take them out, and so the, the tree removal was not in the job. Once the job commences and they start milling and cutting areas, they look, you get into the ground and saw that the tree had an extensive root system well into the bus loop area. If, so you, at a minimum, you have to remove all those roots or else they'll come up again. And typically, what happens in that situation, either the roots come back after so many years and, and destroy the parking lot, or the tree dies. So, at that point, when you just, when that was discovered, it was not included in the original job for 98,000 at all. A decision has to be made, and typically, the decision is to remove the tree in its entirety, add that area paving, and, and then perform a change order. Pricing is at competitively awarded line items. So, essentially, it's more work. It's new work. And again, because of the situation, you don't want to leave it there, because it's either going to grow back or it's going to die. So, you add it into the job as a change order and remove it. So, that's what that cost represents, the cost to remove the tree, pave all that additional square footage, the 40 by 80 spots, so you gain additional parking spots as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions on item twenty-eight? Hearing none, seeing none. We're now at public comment. For those wishing to address the board, we do now have a public comments portion of the agenda committee meeting. Please remember that speaker cards were accepted only until nine o'clock AM. Thank you for taking your time to address the board. I shouldn't have had to read that. Terry Brady, President of DTU.
We could fund salary raises if we could get a couple of these and auction them on eBay. Just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Today, you're getting a packet before you, Madam Superintendent, I think there's one coming to you also. FEA, our state organization, did a statewide poll this year of parents finding out how to reopen schools, and I think our district has done an excellent job. And I wanted to present you not only the findings, but all the cross tabs. I went through and it actually extracted on the first two copies, some of the most important things that I feel are relevant to us that benefit what our district has already been doing. Right now, we see already that the COVID cases are on the rise, and that's very concerning to us, and I wished it was more concerning to a lot of our community leaders. But I know this district has the safety and the well-being of our employees and of our students, first and foremost, above anything. But I know the trend will reverse. It has to reverse soon. So, in doing that, I wanted to make sure I shared with you some of the important items that came up in the survey. One, parents truly believe that distant learning was well-managed, and it was, on such a short period of time. They believe their children did not suffer, and they also believed that teachers remain attentive and they remained responsive to the academic needs of their students. And above all, and if you look deeper into the big packet that I provided you, it talked about how teachers and school-related personnel administrators even went above and beyond just the academic services to meet the needs of the various families. And then all in all, the biggest thing was, and I want to make sure we publicize that, the choice of when we open, how we open, and the services we provide should be a home rule issue, that of the governing body of our school board and our superintendent and school district. That, to me, says a lot about the confidence that our parents have in everything that we're doing. I know, and Madam Superintendent, through the Chair to the Superintendent and others in this room, I think some of the unsung heroes are not only our administrators preparing academically for our students, but Mr. Soares's office or department needs some of the biggest kudos because of ordering sanitizers, the mask, the, where is he?
I know. There he is.
Mr. Soares. Sanitizers, masks, partitions, transportation, meals. I just got a call from one of the largest urban districts yesterday, and they cannot locate sanitizers. And, you know, I wanted to go, we're ahead of you. No, but I didn't, and I referred them to our person who has been in charge of purchasing. If you really mentally average the number of school districts just in Florida alone, to the small number of distributors that you have that provide this stuff that we need to keep our employees, it is mind-boggling how our district has made such great advances in being ahead of the game to provide everything needed for safety for our district and our students and employees. So, to that, I think everyone who's been involved in this needs a round of kudos and a major thank you. Thank you so very much, everyone, for keeping everybody safe. I do want to let you know that once the district decides on what the final choices are going to be to reopen our schools for our students and parents, we at DTU are going to be doing a thing called reopen clinics. We're going to be offering three, and they're going to be offered to all of our members, teachers, parents, and teachers, and ESPs, I mean, our school-related personnel, which would be paraprofessional office personnels, where we're actually going to be doing three Zoom Town Hall meetings on the reopening of the clinics. We're going to be talking about the legalities of opening, and what does it mean, the health and safety, and the collective bargaining issues. So, once the district has established what are going to be the reopenings, then we will then start publicizing the reopen clinics via Zoom to the three different groups. We're going to be offering them three times. It'll be for elementary, middle, and high school, because I think they're all going to be slightly different. And then we're going to integrate some of the learning areas, like the Mount Hermans, our ESE Centers, and some of the other home, hospital, homebound, and some of the other areas, because I do believe, like many of you said today, communications is the key. Let's get them out there. So, we doesn't want to open with empty classrooms. We want to open with full classrooms within the CDC guidelines and what's safe. That way, we can assure our parents and even our older students that we are going to provide you every possible way, means possible, to stay healthy and safe. And I also want to make sure we give that same assurance to all of our employees. Next is the election day. I, too, spoke with Mr. Hogan, and I am probably the only, oldest person here who have experienced when, for experience, not age, where we used to have all of our voting precincts actually in the schools. Every single election cycle, they were in the schools. And where I taught, which is one of the little schools that just got closed, anyway, just thought I'd say that, at John Love, we actually were a very small inner-city school, but we had election, that was our precinct, and we, on every election cycle, they would use the, not the cafeteria, but the auditorium. They would go around back and park, and we would have facilities, and education was never disrupted. Now, at that wonderful little school that's being closed, no, anyway, they have a beautiful library and a facility, and all of our facilities have broadened their space availability, I think, for common areas. I do not understand why we would need to even close our schools on an election day, because the election days are not just that day. We're talking two days, Monday for setups, and then the election day itself. And I believe with a lot of the disruption that has already occurred, and possibly will be occurring maybe in August with some other larger gatherings here in our district, I think we need to be very cognizant that whatever we do, it's another disruption. And I think we need to be examples of showing consistency of what we do and allowing our students to stay on a regular schedule, because it's not going to be status quo, and frankly, it should not be. And so, we need to get everybody into the loop on a regular basis and keep them structured and scheduled for what we need to be. So, I do believe that we could operate our schools on election day without closing our facilities. We might have to readjust maybe PE, how that's handled, or a common area, or an auditorium activity, but I do believe that we could leave our schools open on those days, especially with only three schools that possibly will be utilized by our supervisor of elections. The other thing I would like to, oh, I also want to note that Dade County has not agreed to close all their schools on election day, or they had not as of three weeks ago. Now, things are always changing and evolving, so if that's the case, then fine, but I do want to caution, every time we close a school, our teachers have to make up that day unless it's done virtually. And if it's done virtually, then parents are going to have to take a day off from work, which we're hearing, that is one of the largest concerns, not complaints, out there among the, the parents and the communities as to who is going to be with our students. And that's a very, very important concern. The other thing I'd like to let all of you know is that I am, again, along with some others, I've mentioned this to, to Ms. Schultz, who negotiates for your side of the table, is, come December the 31st of this year, the Family First Act will be finished. Nonvoid, nothing else maintains, and from what I'm hearing from my friends and acquaintances in Congress, I don't know if I have any friends in Congress at this moment, but acquaintances in Congress, there will be no move to expand the Family First right now, because we'd have to do it now and start getting it ready during this cycle to expand it beyond December the 31st. So, I'm going to be making a proposal that we put together some type of a leave document for our employees throughout the district, similar to that of the Family First, in case anyone contracts coronavirus or needs assistance with monitoring students or an immediate family member during that period of time, like a 14-day period. What we will be proposing, and I'm not lobbying, but we, I'm just doing an information, what we would be proposing would just be a one-time, short-term, just, you know, a date certain, it would end during that date certain, just to make sure we are prepared on the front end instead of the back end to meet the needs of all of our employees in this district, because we don't know what the fall's going to bring, nor the winter brings. And I think we've been very proactive, and this is one of the areas I'd like to be proactive in. Along with that also, there is four counties already in the state that have also written language that are, they're in the process of working out. It's called extended illness in the line of duty. And coronavirus, like some other illnesses, like pink eye, or scabies, or things of that nature, or head lice, that their employees might contract, is very difficult to prove during a worker's compensation that you contracted it on the job site. We get that. We know that. We know the law. But we also know that when you have a pattern of illnesses that exist, then we need to possibly, again, develop some languages in the line of duty that might be able, in a very short window period, to protect all of our employees. These type things, like the Family First and other things, gives our employees a sense of comfort and a little bit more of reassurance that we, as a district and a union, are looking at their well-being, because they are too concerned, that they want to come back, they want to educate students, but they are also concerned about the rise in cases. And they don't know what's going to happen in the fall and the winter, and neither do any of us. If we don't have to use it, we never have to use it, and we can put protection language in both of those proposals that protects the district and the employee, and of course, the academic services of our students. And we have always had a great working relationship in, in this avenue, and I believe we will continue to do so. So, as usual, DTU is here to always work with everyone to make sure that, that we're serving our students' needs and our academic needs of all of our employees. Again, yeoman, hallelujah, applause, and great thank you and gratitude for the work of this district and what we did after spring break, and what we're getting ready to do to open our schools. I am so grateful that I'm the union president in Duval County. That's not a suck-up, it's a statement of fact, because I'm hearing from my colleagues around this state, they haven't even started the conversations about how do we prepare for the multitude of, of ordering equipment and supplies and getting our parents informed and getting them ready to give our students back, and even simple things like track and prep for our football teams and, and marching band and some of the course. We want to create a new sense of normality, and I think all of us working together is going to be able to provide that sense of normality for our students. So, I thank you for all your hard work, and again, we're here to be continued partners with all of this. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brady. Appreciate those kudos for, for our operations people. We appreciate that. That ends the agenda committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Board Member Hershey, seconded by Vice Chair Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Action. This meeting is now adjourned. We're going to go, since we hit a schedule right now, let's go ahead and start the, anybody going to take a break?
I'm going to take a quick little break, but I'll be right back.
We'll take a five-minute break for them to reset everything. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break for them to reset everything. Thank you.
Sure they did make it.
She gave these copies.
Did you what?
Those were the copies that she...
Probably. Or either it's, um, the board members that aren't there.
She didn't get one for the office.
There's three up there, so she did.
Oh, okay.
Well, not less than one, I'm sure.
I know, yeah.
Is this, is this...
You already gave them for, uh, date for address in T A or whatever. I've got the dates. There are supposedly going to be a meeting on Thursdays this next year. I didn't find out those dates now. They've always been on Tuesdays.
Are you going, are you going to stay to sign some stuff later, or are you leaving right after, are you leaving right after the meeting? Okay. Because we've got to do some timesheet, some time stuff, so we need to sign some things. Okay.
And I see what Kathy's put in for all this vacation time. Using it up.
Yeah.
Do you have a preference on any of them or all of them, or?
Well, if, if they're meeting after, if they're... If they're, if they're meeting, I like to cut it off. They're meeting before the eighteenth, I look like.
Before the eighteenth of August?
If they're meeting after the eighteenth, I like to speak.
Yeah, I think it's the twentieth. Do you want, so do you prefer the August?
Yeah, I look like.
I can send you a calendar and if you don't fit, you can let me know.
Okay.
But you want me to put you down for their August date?
Right.
Does it work open that? Put it up on a track, yes. The kind of situation.
You can have it in the book? My checks, you have it in the book?
Dr. Green, it's up there. Yeah.
Sure he forgot himself some place or something.
I wasn't sure until some work, I don't even know who. When are you, when are you not going to be the first night?
But I'll take you to the body, it's number two. So you don't need to... I think until, um, my last, last week was our first, um, live meeting back here. So she had never been in the system. So probably two more. Like, I'm not really here today because it's not her. So that's why I've just come down a couple times and thought about it.
You need it, you need it sometime anyway.
Yes, we do.
And then we can still keep them on because we voted.
Yes. Yes. Let's just still be on.
Oh, so as you can see.
Sarah's, are there some...
Mm-hmm. Might need to go up and get some more.
Um, they both, whatever one you, it's only one.
You find something?
I thought I was doing good this morning, get ready. All of a sudden, I was like, oh my God, I have to go, right now. Not used to doing that, doing the whole deal.
Put clothes on and go.
Yeah, and just keep all of it, right? Like, put clothes on is one thing, but like, the whole thing and manage the child for his and getting him out the door.
Is he back at school?
He's in Southern town. We switched over to a new place, um, but I mean, I can't... It's insane, right? Yeah, it's, yeah, and I mean, my husband works from home. For a little while, but this is the time to get out. Yeah. A lot of their days. So I was getting roll. I was only dealing with the most important things. And at the end of two months, like, there's a lot that's sinking, sinking to the bottom on a daily basis, you know? So, it's, uh, maybe we catch up.
We're not on TV.
Nothing is streaming?
Nothing is streaming live, but it's still being videotaped for later. It's just not live. We're not live.
Because our workshops, we don't usually stream.
Correct. Correct.
This one's not very good.
They're not my favorite. What's in that one?
Any white almonds, cashews, dates.
It's like the ingredient sound, like, then you taste it. We'll get you one. Are you going upstairs when you leave?
Yeah. Okay. I have my, I have my banded one. I got, I have a mandarin one and have an Atlantic Coast. I ordered these. Early on, so I have the mask and then I have, I actually like this because I can just wear it. Even like a scarf. I mean, I can just wear it and then I can pull it up and I can actually breathe better through these than, uh...
But the mandarin one's nice, but my daughter uses it because she works at, at, uh, Jeremiah Ice. And so, and it's in mandarins and everybody's like, oh my gosh, we're like, wait, I got so glad I got that mask and you can wear it. Oh, no. Florida State.
You're a Florida State, you're not a Florida State.
You're a Florida State official? Are you, are you a college, sports fan at all?
Soon as they get through it, they, they're waiting. No, I think they're waiting on the... You good? Go ahead and start. The School Board of Duval County School has now convened in its workshop, uh, Student Progression Plan revisions, Student Code of Conduct revisions, Strategic Planning, School Reopening Plan and Governance. Uh, Dr. Green?
We will start with the Student Progression Plan. Our presenter this morning is Mr. Corey Wright, Assistant Superintendent of Assessment, and Ms. Wendy Dunlap, Director of Guidance Services.
Good morning. I will be presenting this morning. Sorry. I will be presenting this morning the revisions for the twenty-twenty-one Student Progression Plan. I'm going to begin by just reminding everyone of the purpose of the Student Progression Plan. Sorry, some technical difficulties. Matt, can you please back the slide up? The purpose of the Student Progression Plan is of course to provide a guide to our school staff, our parents, community members, on what students need to do to progress from one grade level to another, all the way through high school graduation. The Student Progression Plan includes state statute, it includes local district policies, as well as administrative procedures. And this plan helps not only educators, but it's also a guide for our parents so that they understand what students need to do every year to be promoted to the next grade level. Advance slide, please. The Student Progression Plan Committee is made up of a diverse group of people, which includes teachers, it includes principals, district-level administrators and specialists. There are members of DTU, as well as parent and community partners. And the committee is done to provide equity, so it's balanced with gender, race, position, special, special interest groups. And we make sure that we are representing schools from each region in the district. Next slide. There are three different subcommittees that reviews each section of the Student Progression Plan. It includes an elementary level, a middle group, a high school group. And each subcommittee is looking at appropriate feedback, looking at any information that was from the Florida Department of, um, Education, state statute, legislation, and any feedback that we receive from stakeholders. Next slide. The timeline for the Student Progression Plan begins in December. This gives administrators, including principals, the opportunity to make nominations. In January, the meetings began. Each one of the meetings, each one of the levels will meet between the months of January, all through April. During the months of May and June, there's final preparation to prepare for the board. And each year, the upcoming Student Progression Plan is presented in July. Next slide. I will be going over the major changes for the document for the upcoming school year. And these changes, again, are legis, some of it is state legislated, some of it is guidance from the Florida Department of Education, and some were local recommendations made by the district. Next slide. The first slide, as you will see, we are, it's the glossary section of the Student Progression Plan and it is governed by the Florida Department of Education. We have to make sure that we align the definitions to what the, the state language. So, you'll see that we are removing special standards from the glossary section. The students who are eligible, who participate in exceptional student education have now advanced. So, none of the students in our district are eligible for special standards anymore, so that language is removed. We are adding to where you see certain definitions frequently mentioned throughout the document to give people an understanding of what those definitions are. Access points are standards that are now E S C students are eligible for. You'll see information on the Florida Administrative Code, as well as there is language that appears now about our tiered services of support. So, you'll see M T S S mentioned a lot. And also Sala, which is a reference for our students participating in our E SOL programs. Next slide. The next section is in the general section and three of the four changed the recommendations that you see. Three of them are guidance from the Florida Department of Education. One of them is a local, local clarity. So, for two and four, these particular ones pertain to our students who participate in home education and decide to come back to enroll in a school. So, for clarification, for students coming back from homeschool that do not have official records, there is guidance to make sure that schools know for those transition grades, grade six and grade nine, what students need to do when they don't have records. So, if a student is coming to us and they are not making adequate progress, the schools will, um, take those students to the collaborative problem-solving team so that there's a group of educators that can review what the student's def, um, deficiencies are and put the appropriate, um, levels of intervention in place. Also, we just wanted to have clarity that for students coming from home education, if they do come with an official transcript, that those, um, grades and credits are taken at face value. We have information also governed by the Florida Department of Education. As we all know, there were many changes due to COVID-nineteen. One of those changes were the cancellation of the state assessment. So, we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge during the nineteen-twenty school year that F D O E counseled state assessments. And lastly, in the general section, there is clarification on scholarship warnings for students who are not, who are failing. It gives the schools the opportunity to utilize our Student Information Management System Focus to communicate those scholarship warnings with parents through the Focus account. Parents do have the right, if they want, to receive it in, um, written, um, communication, to make that request. Next slide, please. The next section is in the elementary section and this particular, um, proposal was a local decision made by the elementary committee. And in this particular section of retention, it is, um, saying that students in grades K through five can have no more than two retentions. Before a student is retained the first time, there must be a progress monitoring plan in place to identify what interventions will be used and strategies to help that student hopefully get on grade level. If that student has to be retained at the end of the school year, that progress monitoring plan follows the student the next school year to continue to support. Before a student can have a second retention, the school must present that student's information and data to the school's collaborative problem-solving team so that again, a group of educators can look to make certain that they are identifying the appropriate tier-two and tier-three interventions that might be helpful to the student. Keep in mind, in grade three, the state says that students must pass the F S A E L A reading. So, if a student has unfortunately been retained in grades K through two and they do not pass the F S A third-grade reading assessment, that student can be eligible for a good cause exemption. The state will allow that student to move forward. The state will allow that student to move forward to the next grade level if they've been previously retained. However, that student would also, the school would need to continue to keep in place a progress monitoring plan to continue to make certain that interventions and strategies have been identified to continue to get that student back on track to be proficient in reading. Next slide. The next section is also in retention in the elementary section, and there is clarity to Section C, number two. And this is just saying for students, if they are going to be retained, there has to be a document, their deficiencies have to be documented, either through the school, a school-wide progress monitoring plan, or an individual progress monitoring plan. If the student is receiving exceptional education services, it should also be documented through their IEP, or if they're an ESOL student, through their ELL plan. And lastly, in the elementary section, there is clarification identifying the appropriate test accommodations for ESOL students in their two, after their two years of exit. Next slide. The next slide pertains to the middle school section of student progression plan. The middle school committee, as well as the high school subcommittee, took a revisit and looked at information for promotion to high school for middle school students. Last year, during the 1920 school year, it was the first year that we had a provisional promotion process in place where eighth-grade students, who were only missing one out of the 12 required core courses to advance to high school, were allowed to move on to high school to complete that middle school credit and get started on their high school graduation requirements. The committee has revisited and made the recommendation for these students in the same situation, the ones who are only missing one out of the 12 required credits. When that student is in summer school, if they are successfully completing summer school with a 60% or higher and have completed at least 60% of that particular summer school course to advance them on to high school. This recommendation is to, of course, reduce the number of retentions and overrated students that we have in the district and keep these students on track. Because if they have to repeat eighth grade for one course, there is not an opportunity for them not to have to repeat all eighth-grade courses that they've been successful in. So the provisional promotion is a clause that will continue to help us move children forward and provide, while identifying the appropriate strategies that they need to stay proficient. The next section in the middle school plan is addressing the district and state-level EOCs. Just another reminder that FDOE counseled state assessments during the 1920 school year. And lastly, in this section, there is information about the SMART team, which referred to our ESC students who are on special standards. Now that that cohort of students have advanced through, there is no longer a need for SMART team interventions for students on special standards. Next slide, please. The next section addresses the high school section of student progression plan. There is, the state has legislated that there is a new high school option that students can choose to meet graduation requirements, and this is a career and technical education diploma option. It is an 18-credit option. Students must have 14 core credits in the areas of English, math, science, and social studies, but in the areas of electives, these students can benefit by using credits in their career and technical education track, and they have to pass an industry certification. They can also use two credits of work-based learning, or up to two elective credits, including financial literacy. This is an option that some of our students who are participating in our academies of technology or comprehensive schools and CTE programs will have the opportunity now to consider taking this accelerated track. The last sec, the next section in the high school student progression plan section is another note, just that the FDOE did counsel state and district assessments. And next slide. Lastly, acceleration program access policy was in student progression plan, and that information will be moved to align with choice options for students in school choice. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions? Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Board Member Hershey?
I'd just like to clarify this year, we didn't have the FSBA. Just wanted to know how that was going to impact student progression for students who didn't get to take the FSBA in third grade this year.
FSA?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. For students who did not take the third-grade FSA this year, those students, of course, if they passed their reading and their math, they were promoted to the fourth grade, and there will be progress monitoring in place next year just to make sure that students who do have deficiencies, that those deficiencies are being addressed. But they will not be held accountable for the third-grade FSA for this past school year.
So wouldn't that be great if we could get rid of that high-stakes testing in the future?
Without the coronavirus.
Right, right, without the coronavirus. My, if I have one more question, because I had received an email from a parent recently with a desire to retain their student. Evidently, they had expressed, they communicated with the school, and there was agreement. I'm not sure how that resolved, but my impression was the district was not agreeing to that assessment. How does that work when a parent, you know, has a conversation with leadership at the school, there's some agreement at the school level about a need to retain a student, but then the district disagrees with that position? How does that work?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. There is an section where parents, it does address a parent's right to request that their student be retained, and as you said, the parent will meet with school staff to review the school's data. If a decision is made that the school does not support this request, the parent does have the right to make an appeal that goes to the region superintendent for the, for that particular, if it's elementary, middle, or high school, to have a district team look at the particular data to determine if it's the, an appropriate request. Does that answer?
Sort of. It just sounded like from my email that the student, the parent and the school were on the same page, but the district was not. So I was just wondering if there's a disconnect, and the district kind of trumps the perception. Just wanted some insight into that.
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. All retentions do come to the, there's a district committee that reviews all retentions. And if that committee feels that retention is not appropriate, they can send them, they can overturn the school. The parent still has a right to appeal that decision. So that is, that particular case is in that appeal.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any questions on the progression plan? Vice Chair?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. We'll start with the access points. First of all, you did a wonderful job. Thank you so much for sharing all this. I just want to be really clear about what is changing for our students with special needs at the special diploma option or special. Can you just help me understand a little bit more what the opportunities are that we're gonna offer our students with special needs?
Through the chair to Vice Chairwoman Anderson. For access points, this is for our students who have very low functioning. All of the students now do have the opportunity to earn a standard diploma, but access points is an opportunity for the teachers to look at what are the appropriate regular standards for those students. But access points is only for those students who are very, very low functioning. We usually have students who are attending our exceptional student education centers who are eligible for those particular standards.
So there's not gonna be any less support or opportunity for graduation? We're just kind of changing what we call it?
The state made a change in what those standards are. Access point, access level courses are also available to students who are looking toward, who are attending comprehensive high schools. Again, it is just to look at those particular, taking those particular standards just a little bit slower to ensure that the students are getting what they need to satisfy what the state is referring to as regular standards.
Okay, I appreciate that. I know a lot of our families and students depend on being able to access graduation through accommodations like this. So I just want to make sure that that will continue to stay in place. When we are looking at the, can you tell me what is a collaborative problem-solving team?
The collaborative problem-solving team is at the school level, and it's comprised of teachers, administrators, school counselors. There are sometimes other support personnel, such as the school psychologist, who will participate, but it's just a group of educators that will, that comes with different perspectives to look at a student's data to determine what are the appropriate tier-two and tier-three interventions that can be put in place to meet that individual student's deficiencies.
So that team is, that's established at each school by the personnel and staff on site there?
Correct.
Okay. The progress monitoring plan. Who decides the progress monitoring plan? Who implements the progress monitoring plan? For retention?
Through the chair to Vice Chairwoman Anderson. The progress monitoring plans are also implemented at the school level. There's a template that schools can use to help them have consistency in what those particular plans look like. But for each student, the interventions and strategies are unique. Again, hopefully, the team is making those decisions based on that child's individual deficits to try to put things in place to get them where they need to be, to be on grade-level standards.
The reason I ask specifically about that is because having been a classroom teacher, you know, obviously, I think we all want to know the individual needs and status of each of our students in our classroom, but that's hard. It's a lot of work. And to be able to put a student on a progress monitoring plan and implement everything that might need to be implemented, to be able to document all that you need to document so that your professional competency is recognized at the end of a school year if you recommend that a student is retained, seems like a lot, perhaps, for an individual teacher with a certain number of other students. And so I'm wondering if there are other personnel in a building that would help support a teacher to track and monitor and implement services for these students, whether that's in the first year, where we get red flags, like I might be, this child might be needing to be retained, or especially in the second kind of iteration of we're still not quite where we need to be. Are there other personnel people that will help support that teacher?
Yeah. Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. Is this on? You can hear me? No?
Yes.
Okay. The progress monitoring plan is done directly through Focus, and really, anybody that has access to the child's information in Focus can initiate a progress monitoring plan. So that could be a teacher, or it could be anybody else in the building that has access through Focus. And then, once it's updated, they have access to see that as it changes, as other staff and personnel make changes to that progress monitoring plan. So the information is really updated and kept live, and multiple staff members who support the student can update and edit that information as needed.
Okay. And so if a teacher is saying, "I am having a hard," "this child is struggling," I don't think that they're gonna be able to meet the standards to matriculate to the next grade level. Is there a support system for the teacher to help with that child? Is there, are there other interventions that maybe come into play that we can document?
Through the, if you don't mind, through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. As the board probably have seen on the last couple of board meetings, we put supplemental materials on, many of those materials are used for the intervention. Many of those interventions come with their own progress monitoring. So it is as simple as administering that progress monitoring. Therefore, that's your documentation of showing what's been done to support the student. I will say that this has been something that has been very important to me because the data shows that 96% of the students who are being retained are African-American students. The data also shows that of that 96%, there are about 90% chance of them not graduating. So the retention is not solving our problems. We need to recognize that it's not solving our problems and put something in place to start supporting students. We have students that have had up to five retentions in elementary school. They're 12 and 13 years old, and they're still in elementary school. And that's just not working for us. And so that's why we've invested in research-based interventions to support students. This will not be the be-all, end-all. We still will have to do more work, especially in our upper echelon schools, because that's where they can be hidden. You don't see them because the school is performing very well. And the students who are struggling are, they're not as noticeable as when you're in a school where it has a very high population of at-risk students. And that's where we're now going to have to, that's our next frontier. How do we support, get that support in those schools, and move that process forward? But the first step was simply kind of saying, you can only be retained twice in elementary school. I mean, the data tells us, if you're retained, the data tells us if you're retained twice, you're really not gonna graduate. But we were retaining more than twice for a number of students.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the, you know, attention to the data for ensuring that our students have the most potential success for graduating high school. I just, in my mind, want to make sure that we continue to respect the professionalism of our teaching staff, and when there may be a struggle for the teacher, as we've talked about kind of already today, especially for our novice teachers, or teachers that may have less experience with a certain student population, that the appropriate supports are in place for the staff to implement the progress monitoring plan so the student doesn't fall through the crack. And so I'm sure that we are on the same page with that. I just think it's a really important thing to consider as we're talking about the progress, the student progression plan. I had one other question. Oh, in the CTE diploma, for the CTE diploma, it lists here all the credits. I just wanted to be clear, are there testing or accountability requirements as well?
Through the chair to Vice Chairwoman Anderson. Yes, in addition to the credits, the students must still pass the appropriate assessments, as well as have the minimum, at least a 2.0 high school GPA.
Okay. And is that listed someplace? I mean, just because I don't have it in front of me?
Yes, those requirements are listed in the beginning section of the programs of study.
Okay. Thank you so much. That is.
Board Member Hershey?
I just would like, through the chair, to thank Dr. Green, you're singing my tune when you're talking about acknowledging students that can get, kind of fall through the cracks in some of the larger schools that are high-performing. And so I'm glad to know that that's on your radar because that's been a big concern of mine, specifically in my district. Thank you.
Board Member Smith Juarez, any questions?
No, I would just emphasize the saying that we've talked for years as a board that in some of our larger elementary schools, we may have the same number of struggling children as some of our elementaries that are smaller. And so the students that are in a smaller elementary, that elementary school often has resources and support because it's more of a school-wide effort. And so really appreciate the attention and the targeted focus for those students to have individualized plans that have some progress monitoring. And that we're really thinking about retention and the benefit to the student. There's study after study after study that says, you know, more of the same thing for a student who is struggling is not necessarily the key to unlocking their potential. And so really thinking about, you know, what will be different for students, whether that is advancing to. Whether that is advancing to the next grade level and knowing that there needs to be some remediation at the same time new material is being presented, or to retain a student, but to truly have targeted supports and interventions that will produce a different result for that child if they're repeating the same grade. So really appreciate the, the focused attention and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing progress in the data moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Board member Willie?
Yeah, once again, I appreciate the, the presentation through the, through the chair to, to all the folks who presented and provided the information. Uh, just two quick questions, uh, one comment, one question. For the CTE diploma, I know it talks about industry, industry certification and a program completion. So that, so if you go through that track, you have to be, you have to complete the program and pass the industry certification, correct?
Through the chair to board member Willie, that is correct.
Okay. Um, and the other question, so what, one of the things I know that, that I've looked at and folks have looked at is, what, what option does that give you after you finish? If you go through this track for CTE, can you still, do you still have the minimum number of credits and coursework to be able to pursue post-secondary higher education, trade school, all that? Or is that still open and available to you or does this limit you if you have that CTE diploma?
Through the chair to board member Willie, the career and technical education high school option, diploma option does not limit a student's ability to move on to post-secondary, whether that be they want to continue in a vocational or career and technical education program at a state or community college or another technical institute. They would also still have the minimum credits that they would need to be considered for enrollment at a, in a collegiate level program. Keep in mind, if they are going to one of those collegiate level programs, they would have to also have the appropriate ACT, SAT, college admissions scores that would be required of that particular institution.
Got it. Thank you for that. Cause I, I think oftentimes folks, when we have different levels of diplomas, folks wonder like what does this, does this limit our students? And actually this tailored and specifies what our students are able to do. So I appreciate that clarity. The other question I have is, I was looking at the provisional section where it talked about the provisional language around sixty percent, but then it had a strike through around like the labs and other stuff at the bottom. I may have missed that in that conversation, but we're striking through that language because we're not following that protocol anymore. Where the middle school now has a class during the day. Like, is that just gone completely because of the provision? I may have missed that, but I just wanted clarity on that sort of section.
Through the chair to board member Willie, yes, that particular information, the recommendation is to strike it because the students will be, um, through their summer education opportunities, be able to demonstrate proficiency by making that sixty percent and completing at least sixty percent of the particular course that they have failed.
Got it. So it moves from being during the academic year to the summer, being able to recoup it during the summer.
Correct.
That's good. That makes sense. Um, and last, I, I, this is just a comment. I appreciate the focus too on the, the retention piece, especially in the early elementary and school grades. Dr. Green, you said it perfectly, like data is not shown that if you keep retaining students, they're going to do any better or graduate faster or graduate at all. So I think with this sort of document about the progression plan, plus the puzzle pieces of all the other sort of resources that we have, I feel like we can make some strides in ensuring that our students, our most vulnerable students, the ones who, who are in this sort of category don't get left behind. So I appreciate this, this focus and the attention on that as well as some of, some of the other board members have said too. So thank you.
Thank you, board member Willie. Uh, question, the, uh, the CTE program, work-based learning, what do they mean by, is that apprenticeship? Or what do they mean by work-based learning?
The work-based learning opportunities reference to, like you said, apprenticeships or internships or different OJT or on-the-job training course codes that we have. One example would be students participating in internships through the Vice Star programs that we have on campus.
Does it have to be in that particular trade or certification?
That's the idea. The course codes are written so that whatever the work-based learning experience is, is aligned to the courses or, or CT program the student is in.
And, but I see they give them an option of, of doing the two credits in work-based learning or up to two elective credits, including financial literacy, so they can do either or.
That's correct.
Did they address at all the opportunity? Cause some companies don't want to hire you because of liability issues. Has that been resolved at all?
That, that is still somewhat of a struggle and, and it really depends upon the partner that we're discussing opportunities for students with.
So students would be limited in some regards and, and, and meeting this requirement if they can't get a, well, employment, they, 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 I guess they'd get hired, but it wouldn't be paid.
Right. It really, it really depends on the, the business or, or partner that we're trying to work with the students to find opportunities for. But in some cases, it would be in, an internship really where they, they may not get paid. In other cases, they could go find a job on their own if they're eighteen or, or whatever that's aligned to the courses that they're enrolled in.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's a very exciting and growing area. I think kids want to focus, some kids want to focus on that career of technical education, but they need that employment piece to, to make it happen for many of them. I guess the last question I have is, at what point, and I don't know who asked, not the green, what, at what point when this, would the student transition to the bridge to success? I understood it was two years, they have to be two years behind and, and, uh, but I think some kids might need to transition earlier.
Through the chair, the bridge to success starts, um, the earliest is fourth grade. So you, you have to be at least in fourth grade and over age. And we are really working to limit the, the elementary portion because we believe, again, we have the interventions that we're putting in place. If we're reducing the number of times you can be retained, it should limit the elementary version of bridge to success. And bridge to success is now focused more on middle and high school students.
All right. Thank you. That's very good news. Any other, uh, board member Hershey?
Follow-up question through the chair to, to Mr. Wright, actually. I know that there was some conversation with Representative Duggan about the possibility of addressing insurance kind of at the state level to free up options for students to be able to participate in apprenticeship-type programs. Do you know the status of that? Did you track that at all? I know we had a conversation with him. Do you know where that landed or if that's something we need to revisit and continue to pursue in this upcoming legislative session?
Yeah, I recall those conversations. However, I do not, uh, I don't believe I've seen anything finalized in that regard.
So that would just be an ongoing conversation for us to keep in mind headed into the upcoming legislative session. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Student Code of Conduct revisions, Dr. Green.
Mr. Jackie Simmons, Executive Director of Student Services, will come forth and give that presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good morning again.
Good morning.
I'm here to go over the Student Code of Conduct proposed changes for the 2021 school year. In the beginning, I wanted to kind of just give a quick overview of the committee members and the different teams that were associated to contribute to this process. We had an opportunity to engage parents, teachers, students, community, nonprofit stakeholders, district advisory councils, Duval juvenile justice personnel, our own policy and compliance, district administration, school police, school-based administration, Duval Teachers Union, State Attorney's Office, Jacksonville Sheriff's Office, and NAACP, just to name some of the stakeholders that were engaged in this process. Moving on to some of our changes, we'll look at the Student Code of Conduct and we'll address some of the major changes and revisions. Under this section, you'll notice that we are talking about our general revisions of the Student Code of Conduct. Item number one refers to special notes within the Student Code of Conduct around the Student Code of Conduct Infraction 310. This policy was changed due through some of our local as well as policy and compliance to ensure that we were in alignment with what the state has indicated should be. We also, after researching some of the other large urban districts that had similar language, decided on this language where we would include, uh, conduct outside of school, including threats, intimidation, harassment, and/or discrimination, where the intent incident is well-known to the public, which has a detrimental effect, impact on the safety and welfare of students. Oftentimes, our teachers, administrators come to us with concerns that derive from the outside of school, i.e. social media, i.e. other different things that actually come in from the outside that has a strong negative impact within our daily operations of our schools. And we wanted to have a way in which we would be able to address those outside influences. Number two, special notes, we are adding, uh, the wearing of facial covering will be required during certain times of the school day to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19. Students who do not have the appropriate facial coverings will be provided one. Bandanas may not be worn as a facial covering. Facial coverings must meet the requirement of the General Code of Appearance. That is also changed and I'll go over that within the Student Code of Conduct and dress apparel. We've been very clear that we don't want to be punitive in this nature, but we wanted to ensure that we gave principals and school administration an opportunity to be able to ask, as well as through our superintendent, provide facial coverings and face masks for those students when they're attending our schools as well as riding our, our buses. We've added some language around unsubstantiated bullying and unsubstantiated harassment. While we do have policies with regard to what those things look like, typically there's not a point where we've unsubstantiated it and said that through the investigative process that these things did not happen. We, we typically substantiate it and then reinforce with the appropriate discipline. These changes allow us to document that, and those were state additions to those particular codes to ensure that all of us were operating in alignment throughout the state. If you move, continue on to some of the general revisions of Student Code of Conduct. Looking at athletics, we had quite a few changes in the athletics section. Participation in athletics is a privilege, not a, not a right. Participation in athletics is a privilege and not a right. That was some of the language during some of our meetings with our director of athletics and her team, as well as some of our community constituents who had concerns in that area. We wanted to make sure that we added the age limit of nineteen years of high school, for four years. Age limit of fifteen with middle school eligibility being three years. Ensuring that we had verification of health insurance. Any other district policy that would remove or prevent a student from participating in extracurricular activity. We wanted to modify some of the language around, to all students in the district to include that. Any rules or regulations that are not addressed in a middle school constitution, we would defer to the Florida High School Athletic Association bylaws, which would, we will also modify the language on the eligibility. Eligibility would be determined the day that report cards are issued for all students in the district. And the special note around the EL six form must be completed and submitted to the receiving school prior to tryouts. Continuing on with our Code of Appearance, we wanted to make sure that in the general revisions of that code, that we talked about facial coverings explicitly to match what I had previously talked about with regard to clothing and accessories and facial coverings. And at the bottom of that, we're talking about the bandanas may not be worn as a facial covering. While we prohibit bandanas, oftentimes in this climate, they would want to utilize that as a facial covering. Looking at our DCPS code for 1.08, this has always been one of our higher, uh, of infractions, unauthorized absence from class, or what we genuinely call skipping. I think we're one ahead on the, the slide. So in this area, while we already had some things in place, the committee wanted to make some additions with regard to the, um, interventions and occurrences that were, were happening. As a result, we know that state law precludes us from suspending a student for excessive absences. So we wanted to make sure that we had a robust amount of interventions for those students that were skipping and/or having unauthorized absence for classes. So we made some additions in that. So we made some additions with regard to the detention, apology straight to the teacher, which leads into some of our restorative practices. We increased the opportunity for ISSP, loss of curricular activity. We also attribute some of this to possibly challenge through guidance to get to the underlying issue as to why students are avoiding classes. We talked about our check-in and check-out form, which gives us a greater accountability for what students are doing, associating them with the mentor partner. We talked about mandatory SOS, which is our student option for success on the third occurrence. We also looking at mandatory conference in-person with parents. Again, loss of extracurricular activities, if those things are applicable. We also talked about mandatory conferences with parents to address those students that are habitually to address those students that are habitually violating this particular Student Code of Conduct. So our team, along with our principals and teachers and parents, really put a lot of work into assisting us with what we felt would be great additions to this particular Code of Conduct infraction. Looking at our Level 2 revisions, which we know are intermediate infractions, starting with your Level 2. Many of these are, three of the four on this page are language changes that were derived from the state around our CESSAR violations. So 202, we just took the language from the state where the age used to be 18, the age is now 21. So. And 2.09, which is a fighting. If you'll note, either physical intervention results in injury requiring first aid and medical attention has been taken out per the state guidelines for that Code of Conduct infraction. 2.10, which is our local code of initiating a fight. There are some conversations around including impedes adults slash agent from breaking up fights. What typically happens and what was reported through our committee is that oftentimes, the circle evolves around a fight and students deliberately don't allow adults to get in to get the situation under control. So we wanted to make sure that we had some language to support schools in that area. Trespassing, again, this is a state change where we're looking at using the words grounds and off-campus. So just so that we're in alignment with the state definitions of trespassing. Looking at our major infractions and Level 3 revisions of the Student Code of Conduct. 3.03, physical attack on school board employee. We wanted to make sure that we included, utilize the language of included but not limited to. This way, we were able to capture many of the events that were going on that simply was not included in previous versions of the code. 3.05, theft and larceny. We wanted to make sure that we were in alignment with the state where these incidents fall below $750 threshold, are not reportable in CESSAR. Instead, they should be used a locally defined code in incidents, which we have around stealing. So that monetary threshold went up and the state wanted to make it, and we wanted to make sure we were in alignment with the state. 3.06, breaking and entering or slash burglary. We wanted to make sure that we stayed in alignment with the state as well and took out with force or unauthorized presence in a building or other structures or conveyance with evidence that an intent to damage and remove property or harm persons. This change, again, is a state change to ensure that we're in alignment with not only the state but with our local law enforcement agencies. 3.09, indecent, offensive, or lewd behavior. We knew that we needed to make some changes here, so we added the terminology around racial hate language and/or material to make sure that we were able to encompass all indecent types of language in this or display within our school. We also noted that this action would require police notification and consultation with our DCPS school. Continuing on with that, we talked about the language earlier around sexual harassment. Again, this is a state change to the language. So the state wanted to strike out an incident in which one person demands sexual favor from another under the threat of physical harm. That has been taken out and our code now reads as the state code reads. 3.13, disruption on campus. Again, we wanted to provide examples of what the disruption meant around significantly disrupt all portions of campus activities. Examples are major disruption include bomb threats, inciting a riot, initiating false alarm situations where we had to remove students from the learning environment in order to ascertain whether there was a threat or not. So we wanted to make sure that we documented that appropriately in this code and the state provided some guidance with language around that. Threats and intimidations, we talked about that earlier. Again, this is another state change with regard to striking out some of the language that was in our previous code and ensuring that our code was in alignment with the state definition of threats and intimidation. 3.21, bullying. We wanted to make sure that we included that definition around systematically and chronically inflicting physical hurt. But also, one of the additions that the state put in and we followed suit was bullying includes instances of cyberbullying as well, knowing that many, in many instances, our students are engaged in social media and those things do come across social media. So this gives us an opportunity to address those social media concerns of cyberbullying. 3.22, you'll note that that's our sexual assault. And again, this is a state change where they've stricken out the threat of rape, fondling, indecent liberties, child molestation, and they've added threatening rape, fondling, indecent liberties, or child molestation. Both males and females can be victim of sexual assault. So we just changed our language to be in alignment with the state. The 3.26 was our local code that was changed or added some language to that. Any form of communication that is slash was posted that poses a threat. And we struck out with action, actual able to be carried out in experience in dealing with this code over the past couple of years. We know that, we really don't know whether a kid has the ability to actually carry it out. That's a real hard find for us. So we wanted to strike that out of the code and allow our school police as well as the school personnel to appropriately investigate the facts. And our last code changes are our Class 4s, which encompasses some of our zero tolerance codes. 4.02, the drug sale and distribution excluding alcohol. Narcotic or controlled substance was added to bring us in alignment with the state. Arson, 4.03. The state added intentionally to that statement. Fires that are not intentional or caused by accident or cause to do damage are required to be, are not required to be reported in CESSAR. So we changed our language to make sure we were in alignment with the state. 4.10, battery, sexual battery. Again, we wanted to ensure that both males and females can be victims of sexual battery and adjust our language to the state language. 4.11, battery. The state, again, wanted to make sure that the battery where an attacker is intentionally or knowingly causes great bodily harm or permanent disability or permanent disfigurement, use of a deadly weapon, or whether attacker knew or have known the victim was pregnant. So we wanted to make sure that we added that language that puts us in alignment with the state. Kidnapping and abduction. That language also is in alignment with the state change and the homicide code. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we did conduct work group functions. And again, teachers, parents, DTU, athletics, school-based administration, community stakeholders were all engaged. In the work groups, we had a review of the current year's data points, discipline, assignments to our hearing office and alternative schools, our restorative justice data analytics, reflection on data points, what are patterns that emerged in 2019, 2020. Small groups were assigned for brain level brainstorming. Working group opportunities were reviewed and submitted back to us. The review and recommendations that are based on statutory language are just what they are. Those things came directly from the state. We reviewed and went over our local recommendations and an aggregate of revisions for each grade level infraction. This concludes the revisions to the 2021 school year Code of Conduct's proposed changes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Simmons. Questions?
He's looking at me like you expect me.
You have a question, go ahead. Vice Chair Anderson.
I have a few questions and a few recommendations. I will try to move through them quickly. The, I don't have a page here, I'm looking at it on my computer. The modification of language for athletics and limiting eligibility. There's a bullet point here that we have added language around verification of health insurance. And I'm wondering, what is the impetus of this? And I have some concern about students that may not be able to provide verification of health insurance.
Through the Chair, the Board Member Anderson. In our committee conversations, there are many students that if they cannot or do not have insurance, the district does have processes in place for which we will be able to engage the parents with regard to insurance opportunities. This is also a safeguard for injuries that occur while students are participating in extracurricular activities around sports to ensure that students are able to receive the most appropriate medical treatment as well as rehabilitation before they reengage in participating.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that the step of being able to help guide parents to the right place, I certainly wouldn't want this to be kind of an equity of access issue for certain students. The next question I have is around the bullying code, 3.21. I'm wondering, I tried to briefly look through the Code of Conduct to breeze through it, and I don't see a lower level, maybe two, Level 2 code around harassment. And I'm wondering if that's something that I missed or if there's maybe opportunity to look at including a lower level infraction for harassment since we know that harassment over time is sort of what leads to bullying and being able to intervene earlier.
Through the Chair, the Board Member Anderson. We also had conversation around that and thought that the Class 3 code allowed in the matrix of interventions, allowed schools opportunity to, based on the occurrences. As you know, in our Code of Conduct, we have where students are given appropriate consequences based on the occurrence. So if it was a first-time occurrence for that, the school would have a caveat of interventions and those interventions escalated as the occurrences became more than just one. But we did not want to minimize the fact that students were being harassed. We kind of just left that at the control of the schools to determine, is this something that we could address through the first occurrence and get the kid the appropriate assistance that they need? And this would typically go away. And if it did not, the next time that they committed such an infraction would ensue a heavier consequence, if you will.
I will just add that I would like for us to consider continuing that conversation for a couple of reasons because I think that the earlier we can intervene and not allowing something to escalate to a level of bullying, I think that could be better, especially when we're looking at the consequences of identifying something as bullying and the, it's escaping me now, Schools of Hope. Is that right? The scholarship opportunities, right? So if we don't intervene early at harassment, then we get to a level where, you know, now we're at risk of losing students out of our buildings. And so the potential for an earlier, lower-level code for harassment, I would hope, would get us with less bullying infractions rather than a more formalized harassment intervention procedure. So maybe that's something we can continue to look at. The other question I had, last question and then some recommendations, is around the theft. It looks like maybe the state is setting the threshold at $750. Is that correct? And we don't have a lower level, again, a lower level intervention or a Level 2 that would be for a lower dollar amount?
In order for it to meet the guidelines for a CESSAR event, it has to meet that threshold. We do have a code for just common stealing.
Okay, okay, I missed that one, thank you. And does that have a dollar amount attached to it? Okay. And then, on the same page, 3.09, incidents of offensive or lewd behavior. As I'm looking at the language that we've included here, we have racial slash hate language and material. And what I don't want to happen is for it to be narrowed, the scope of it to be narrowed. So I'm thinking more along the lines of language that would be something like any material perceived as discrimination or bigotry or propaganda intended to incite hate. Because I think when we're thinking about what that might look like, we could look at religion, we could look at gender, we could look at sexuality, we could look at race. So I don't want to narrow the scope to racial slash hate language and somehow misguide people to think that there's not a full broad range of ways that we can engage in offensive or lewd behavior with material items. And then, my next recommendation is related to the facial coverings. I am fully on board with not trying to create some situation where we are enforcing. But I worry that schools and teachers without some guidance will go in all different kinds of directions with the way they try to get students on board. And I don't know if there's room separate, maybe, from the Code of Conduct or maybe to go along with this, like an example of a recommendation of almost like a tiered response. So something like, if you have to, we'll redirect the student, right? That's a low. Redirect the student, ask them to put on their facial covering. A step two might be a student conference. Hey, listen, let's talk about why this is an important rule for you and for your fellow classmates and teachers. The third level might be a parent conference where we talk to the parent about child's really having a difficult time. So I don't know that we need to have a discipline, you know, piece here, but something that helps the teachers and the schools know how to follow a process for what our expectation is may be helpful. And I'm only saying that because I've talked with some building leaders who are feeling a little nervous about how to quote-unquote enforce this or how to help encourage students to do this. And then finally, if they're, if we're really having problems, at what point does it escalate to a code? You know, and what code would that be? You know, if a student is being completely defiant or, you know, disrespectful.
Through the Chair to Vice Chair Anderson. I'm very hesitant about putting anything in the code because the Code of Student Conduct is our way of addressing discipline.
Right.
And I've made it very clear that we're not going to make wearing facial coverings about discipline. It is simply- It is simply, if they don't have one, give them a disposable one. We are doing our due diligence, meeting with principals and having that conversation about what do you do when you see a student not wearing a facial covering? We, the only location that we have said we will require facial covering is when you're riding on a bus, because we cannot keep them succeed apart. We will ask them to wear facial coverings when they are moving outside of their classroom. The goal is when they're in their classroom, they should not have to wear a facial covering. Or they can, if they desire, but if they wanted to remove it, they can. Because we put something else protecting sort of another barrier at their desk. We will provide that support to the schools. Mr. Simmons will provide that support to the group he meets with, with deans. Mr. Green, the chief of schools, will provide that support to principals and assistant principals. Our goal is not to be in the facial covering police business. We're providing that support for students. We want to make sure that if students want to wear their own facial coverings, they can, but they need to follow the same guidelines as T-shirts. We would not expect anything disruptive or
Inappropriate.
improper on a T-shirt, we're saying the same thing about a facial covering. That's the only reason is in the code is because we've seen some interesting facial coverings, very nice facial coverings. But we also understand that if we allow them to wear something as simple as a bandana, it could lead to other things.
And I totally understand what you're saying. I think that, I think we're going to have staff that handle things differently, that may be on the same page with not wanting to police. And we may have staff on a different side of things where they feel like that's their duty or responsibility. And so I just wonder whether or not it's helpful to building leaders for the district to almost provide some cover, right? That we send, this is our expectation, this is, there's some steps you could take. That way they can communicate, you know, with their staff so that we aren't getting in the business of, you know, face mask policing. So it sounds like you've got that kind of covered through your, you know, your channels of
Yes, we have it covered.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then finally, I was looking at the skipping matrix. Let me say, first of all, I think that the addition of some of these pieces is great. I'd really like to see something like an apology letter, which seems like a simple thing, but really means a lot. And guidance referrals, I would like to see that more in some of the matrix items that, as I reviewed briefly, it doesn't seem to be there. And so I think moving forward as we look over the matrix of interventions that we offer for infractions, that we look at how to get some of these pro-social opportunities and preventative opportunities in for students. I had a couple of questions around it. Can you repeat items? So if I choose, it looks like there's, they're in the same there's, it's in the same occurrence, the same option is in the occurrence multiple times. I'm trying to find an example. So a mandatory parent conference in person, for example, is in the third occurrence and the fourth occurrence. Would a, would a staff person be able to check the same option two times in a row? Or is the expectation that they're choosing a different option for each occurrence?
Through the chair to Vice Chairwoman Anderson. The expectation, as we've seen it, is to provide those schools with an opportunity and a caveat of intervention opportunities. We are not eliciting that they do it the same one. So this is why, if you did not utilize the mandatory parent conference in the third choice, you would still have that option in the fourth choice. Based on that student, however, you may want to engage that parent multiple times based on that student's engagement, not only in this infraction, but his overall school or her overall school's engagement.
And I appreciate that. I think that if it's not, my only thing would be if it's not working. Right? If it didn't work and we've got the same behavior happening again, just trying to make sure that we're tapping into all the different opportunities to help a student. And rather than just seeing kind of a box-checking exercise happen, that we're really trying to help our students. Which I know is always our intention. I don't mean to say it's not. I also don't see anywhere in here where guidance or counseling referral becomes mandatory. And that that might be helpful. Not only for this, but in many of our matrices. Because usually there's something else going on, right? Thank you for indulging me.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Grant, any questions? Board Member Willie, any questions?
I have a follow-up question, but I'll put it in an email. But this is really helpful information. I think, I do have one sort of comment around sort of the COVID sort of piece and putting that in the code of conduct. I think it is sort of a, it's sort of a tough one. But I do think just even having a series of potential guidelines that folks know about, I think will be important that folks are in and back in, which I'm sure people are thinking about, at least to sort of look to something. And I think that speaks to Board Member Anderson's point too, about having something to, sort of say, what are the sort of rules and engagement? But I mean, I think a lot of adjustments are going to have to be made. And I think these are some good ones that we're hearing today. So thank you for the time, Mr. Simmons.
All right. Thank you. Board Member Smith Juarez.
Thank you. I agree that a lot of the COVID protocols, it has much guidance as we can give to schools and as much communication as we can have with staff and with students about the importance of protecting themselves and protecting others. You know, when we think through the facial covering issue, I can respect and understand that, you know, just using the term that has been used, but being the facial covering police or that kind of thing could potentially be timely if there is not, or time-consuming if there is not a culture that's built in the school early on. But I think a lot of that comes with conversations around responsibility to the school community. And that that facial covering is more for those who are around other individuals as much as it is for the individual themselves, if not more so, in terms of what we see. And as we see the rising detection of asymptomatic carriers who are contagious, I think that's going to be very important to communicate to school communities that that facial covering protects others, even if an individual may not suffer symptoms, but could be transmitting the virus. So I think as we walk through that, we certainly will learn more. But as much as we can provide guidance and coaching and information to our school communities about joint responsibility, I'm hopeful that we will be able to create cultures of care and compassion for others that I know we do around many other issues in our schools. And that that will prevail rather than, you know, more of an enforcement aspect. And along those same lines, in terms of, you know, kind of proactive engagement rather than enforcement. Going back, through the chair to Mr. Simmons, to your comments around athletics and extracurricular activities. I have a few questions. Some more specific, some more global. And so as we look at sports and extracurricular activities, I just want to be clear, are we defining those as activities that happen outside of the regular school schedule? So, you know, if a child is enrolled in a class that may have after-school activities attached to the class itself by way of example, technical theater at Douglas Anderson, where many of the stage sets and other things are built, sometimes during class, but oftentimes after class. How are we considering those types of scenarios?
Through the chair to Boardwoman Smith Juarez. We're considering those after-school activities, those activities that are elective in nature. Athletics, those things that are not tied to a student's enrollment in a class.
Okay, so if there were required activities that happened outside of the school day that contributed to a student's performance in a class, you know, sometimes these things sort of occur and pop up, especially in elective classes, not as what we might think of as homework, because they're collective activities of the class that they do happen outside of the school day. So those would not be considered under the way that this is being defined? Am I understanding that correctly?
Through the chair to Boardwoman Juarez. Those are not included in what students would normally take. However, I would say that even under such curriculums, the principal in that school would be able to collaborate and mitigate if additional assignments or alternative assignments would be appropriate to substitute for some of those activities that are actually activities and not in alignment with the grading of what that teacher is asking students to do. So to answer your question, we're looking at after-school activities that are not aligned with classes. However, just like with any other class, the school administration can have alternative assignments if in fact they feel like that student or that student's behavior would cause further detriment if allowed to participate.
Okay, okay. And appreciate that that is being evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And certainly would not want any student to be penalized for, you know, academic or course credit or course performance. I think that's something, you know, that we've talked about quite a bit, as well as, you know, not using those restrictions, you know, to penalize students. And then it's sort of along those lines, and I will look to my board colleague who has more expertise in this area professionally than I do. But I have certainly read several journal articles and other research recently in speaking to a trauma-informed approach to to children and to school discipline that oftentimes restricting something that motivates the student to be engaged in the school community can actually further withdraw a student or create those expressions of trauma and frustration and really the communication coming with students that can often lead a child, as our code of conduct can be written, deeper into disciplines than, rather than having the intended effect of motivating a student to, you know, to correct his or her behavior or to use different behavior to express emotions that may be related to childhood experiences and other experiences. And we all know that, you know, there's a difference between a child man and uncle had, which children do, and sort of learning boundaries. And children really having some expressions of needs through their actions that we might, as adults, consider disruptive or unacceptable. And so can you just, through the chair to Mr. Simmons, talk about as restriction from sports, from extracurricular activities, from pro-social opportunities for students on campus are evaluated as potentially being restricted for students who are experiencing some kind of corrective action? You know, sort of what lens do we use? How do we approach that in a way that we're looking at the individual experiences and needs of the particular child?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith Juarez. We, in our district, as you know, are a big restorative practice district. Many of our engagements with students lead to the harm or recognizing the harm that you do to others as well as yourself with regard to these sometime disciplinary behaviors. We also have a very robust MTSS, which is in alignment with our full-service schools where the people who are actually engaging these students on a day-to-day basis have a real opportunity to attempt to figure out what's going to work for individual students. I agree that in many instances, removing the right to do something could further exacerbate what's going on with that child. And that's one of the reasons why we have engaged the opportunity for them to have guidance as well as referral to our full-service school as well as near-peer mentors within the school so that we are able to wrap our arms around what's happening with that individual school, with that individual student. So we're certainly wouldn't look at a first offense of a student involved in whatever the infraction may be to automatically go and restrict their engagement in activities that we know are so important for them to be engaged in. So certainly want to thank you for that and allow us to recognize that we're on that same page with you. And we've put some mechanisms in place to ensure that as we disseminate or execute the student code of conduct, that our training provides opportunities for our deans, assistant principals, and principals to engage in other interventions that could be more successful than simply excluding a student from a particular type of an event. So we'll continue to train that with our principals, assistant principal, deans, as well as our collaboration with our school guidance department.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I know that oftentimes, or sort of the, maybe age now with, or outdated with, of taking something from a student will inherently activate motivation to earn its back. And what we know is that if we don't deal with the underlying cause of what's happening with the student in the first place, that it could have the opposite effect. And so really appreciate the restorative practices, the, you know, MTSS, the other interventions that you mentioned, and a really comprehensive approach to that. That we're really using that in a limited and targeted fashion. So I appreciate the language change and am supportive of it. But also just want to make sure that it's being used sparingly. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Appreciate your hard work and look forward to the update next year. Ms. Young, I think, Dr. Green, we have the gentleman to discuss the strategic plan. Is he, is he on the line now? And we'll break after this. We had a plan to break at 12 o'clock and come back at 1:00. But I think he has another engagement. We'll break before we get to the last two items, which is safer reopening of schools and and governance. Is he there?
Hi, Chairman.
Matt, can you confirm if Mr. Cabell is on the line?
Yes.
So, he just answered, so that is an affirmative, and this is just really a continuation of the conversation, Chairman Jones, that the board asked to have regarding the strategic planning continuation. And he is happy to share with the board opportunities to kind of reconvene that work, and I think the expectation today would be to see if we could start working on a timeline for when the board would like to approve its strategic plan, so that we can do some backward planning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cabell. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself again, and we are...
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you again. I certainly look forward to being back in person rather than via the phone. What I want to do today is just clarify you all's collective vision for what you want to accomplish with strategic planning and on what timeline. What that will do is allow us and your staff to fine-tune a process that can be brought back to you all through consideration. But we need to get the big picture of that process hammered out today, as well as getting some clear timelines by when you want the process to be completed. So, that's the conversation I want to walk you through over the next 20 or so minutes. In addition, I just want to take a moment, you know, to share as we're the council working with you all and districts, member districts all across the nation, we're seeing a lot of folks who are experiencing the same types of things as you all are experiencing. Probably the most important piece of advice that I can offer to you all based on what we are seeing nationwide is that now more than ever, the school board's role as the torchbearer for a focus on student outcomes is vital. There's certainly going to be a wide variety of other issues that are going to be in constant competition for your attention, whether they be issues related to what's happening with ballot box, issues related to what's happening with COVID-19, and so on and so forth. You all play a vital role of being the community leaders who are tasked with helping the community stay focused and helping the school system stay focused on what are we doing to continue to effectively educate our students even during these challenging times. And certainly, proceeding aggressively with the strategic planning process is a key part of how you continue to bring leadership to that new community. So, to quickly, so I want to quickly recap what we talked about last time to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, last time we were together, we talked about the role of the board to really craft the vision and values of the community in the form of goals and guardrails, and then the role of the superintendent to create a plan, implementation plan, to accomplish the vision and values over the next five years. Have you all had a chance to look at that five-year strategic plan process outline that I provided?
We have a copy of the five-year strategic plan process, which was handed a little while ago. Yes, sir.
We haven't seen this.
Then, before I, you know, because I'm sure each of you probably absorbed different amounts of it, instead of going through it step by step, let me just start by asking, what questions do you have about the proposed process? Now, remember, this is just a template, a rough draft. What would happen at the end of this conversation? We take all of your feedback from this conversation, and then we'd actually apply that to creating a fully-built-out version that is customized to you all's needs. But before we get into that part of the conversation, I just want to check in first, what questions do you all have about the idea of the process overall, specifically this idea that we're doing some planning right now, but then the next phase will be the board really doing the community engagement necessary to get clarity around the community's vision and values, and then writing those down, making the vision plain? And then what clarity, and then what questions do you have about the second phase, about the superintendent's role, taking the community's vision and values, which is headed to provide a board, and coming up with an implementation plan over the next five years to accomplish them? What questions do you have about that overview of the process?
I don't know. Does anyone have any questions about the process? I think we need to decide as a board, when do we want to have this completed? And I think also having some type of in-person meetings with the community engagement piece is important. Virtual meetings are something that we have to tolerate, but I don't think that's the best way to engage and allow stakeholders and community individuals. So, I guess we need to decide as to what date we want to have the plan completed, and then that gives you the direction on how we start the process. You can back up your timeline from that.
That's absolutely correct. But before we dive into that question of the timeline, first I just want to see if there are any board members who have questions about, you know, the basic concept of this strategic planning process? Before we decide on what's the right timeline, just want to first check in and see if there are any board members who have any questions that concern as to whether this is even the right process, because the timeline doesn't really matter if we haven't chosen the right work to be focused on. So, any questions about, is this the right, about the extent to which this is the right work, questions about this work as it's been laid out?
Boardmember Willie, or Boardmember Smith Juarez, are there any questions?
Yeah, this is Boardmember Willie. I think we're, I'm glad we're revisiting the conversation. I think what we laid out before and what we have from others, I have it, you know, to us too, is the right work and the right sort of content. So, I think if we're using this as a pass-go opportunity, I think this is the thumbs-up pass-go, and I think the next question would be exactly what the next question would be, which is how do you leave this over all the other things that are happening to do it in the right way? So, I'm good, thumbs up, as far as what we're looking at and how we're looking at ourselves.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Smith Juarez?
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions. I would just say that, you know, really appreciate the detailed overlay, and this does align and maybe was based on our board policy, or maybe our board policy is based on some best practices that the Council of Great City Schools has imparted on our districts over time. But this does align to the policy that we have in terms of strategic planning and the various roles of the board and the superintendent.
Excellent.
Okay, any other questions from board members here?
Okay, then, so with that feedback, and what I'm hearing is clarity from the board to proceed with the next step of this, so thank you for that feedback and clarity. So, as we start to think about, when do you want the process to finish? And remember, there are two major phases. Phase one is really the part that the board owns, which is where are we going? What's the vision? What's the value of the community that the superintendent needs to be responsible to? Phase two is the superintendent putting together a five-year implementation plan to accomplish the vision and values. So, the first question I have before you is, by when does the board want to vote to adopt the goals and guardrails? If the result of going out, listening to the community for the vision and values is eventually, you write those down in a series of policy statements, goals that reflect the vision, what do we want our students to know and be able to do, guardrails that describe the values, what are the non-negotiables that must drive how the work is accomplished? And so, throughout this process, what it suggests is that it just goes very intentionally of getting feedback from the community, building graphs, getting more feedback from the community, revising the graph, and then eventually adopting a set of goals and guardrails, at which point then the superintendent can begin the process of going out with her team to create the implementation plan. So, the first question is, when does the board want to do its final approval of the goals and guardrails? When would you all want to vote, say, here are the goals for the next five years, and here are the guardrails for the next five years, and the superintendent has to operate with that? And while you're thinking about that, some key things to consider is you want to think about how long in advance of next, of the '21-'22 school year, do you want perhaps conclude so that it can, so that this work could be used to drive next school year's work? How far in advance of the budgetary process do you want this work completed so that this work can fuel the budget proposal that the superintendent brings you back? Those are the types of things you want to think about. What is the latest possible date that you would want the board to vote to approve the goals and guardrails?
So, we had had an earlier discussion about doing this while we still have our current board in place, and we recognize the fact that, through the Chair, Dr. Green, I think it's probably what, February or March, you start thinking about the budget for the upcoming school year?
That is correct.
So, having said that, I know that there is a tight window and a lot going on. If it's at all feasible, I would like to recommend that the board be able to have a discussion and have our strategic plan in place by November, when our current board is, while our current board is still seated. The reason for that is because planning for the '21-'22 school year starts in February, March, and that is the guiding star for the direction of the district and priorities of the budget. If, my concern is, is if we wait until we have new board members and do that, we really are not coming up with a strategic plan that we're going to see in place and a budget built around and priorities of the district set until 2022 school year. So, my recommendation would be, and I don't know the date of the final board meeting, I know that Boardmember Grimes and Boardmember Smith Juarez are sad for that day coming.
How did you know?
But it would be in November, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay, that would be, any other recommendations?
My only concern with the November date, which I think was certainly the conversation we had before, which would be an ideal scenario, is it, is how much we have to tackle between now and November, how much we already have on our plate? And so, I think that part of that, I guess, I would, as I'm looking at this timeline, it looks like a six-month timeline, which would put us out to something like December, which of course would have new board members seated to be voting on the final plan. But can we accomplish everything we need to accomplish with community meetings in the face of all the rest of the community meetings, all the rest of the things we have on our plate? I mean, there's just a lot on our plate right now. And so, I don't, I don't know if it seems to make, I would ask the superintendent, I suppose, whether or not a December or January vote would be too late to get us a strategic plan in place for a '21-'22 school year? If we adopted the strategic plan as late as something like January, would that be too late for the '21 school year?
Through the Chair, to Vice Chair Anderson, no, it would not be too late. Again, this is the board's strategic plan, so I play a role.
Certainly, we don't want to, I mean, I don't think it's any of our intention to put undue burden on the staff to prepare, you know, or to align a budget with the strategic goals. So, and my thought about a December is, to Boardmember Hershey's point, we're going to have new board members come on. Can we get them up to speed to vote with confidence in December? Because they won't be sworn in until like the 20th or something, right, November? Right, so...
After the November meeting is...
Yeah, so, I mean, it's either, I think we're either looking at November or January, you know, I don't know that we can do in December.
That's what y'all came into.
Correct.
And, you know, we're going, well...
What's, what are we doing here?
What are we doing here? Yes, exactly. So, and I don't, either way is fine with me, but I can see, but there again, you do want to get it going, and we do have a lot on our plate, so...
I think it would be good to have benefit of the outgoing board members in the developing of the five-year plan because of their experience. And I think having that, having that experience in that process is helpful, even if we don't make the November deadline, at least we will have benefit of their experience and knowledge in developing a strategic plan. And perhaps if we can't meet the November deadline, the new members will at least have, will be a lot further down the road than we are if we wait until they are seated. I don't want to see us make that long.
I think November's a good goal, and if we don't make it, then...
Well, and I would like to suggest that, you know, we have a primary coming up in August. Maybe that one race has a lot of people in the race that might go to November, but I would like to suggest that we encourage those that are going to be in a runoff or whose seat has been determined, that they attend workshops and engage and follow online, or what, to me, that would be if you know you're going to be, or you anticipate being a member of the board by August, it's going to be narrowed down, then that is part of your, to me, your responsibility for pursuing the office is keeping up with what is going on and participating in community meetings and that kind of stuff. And I think, you know, to me, that would just be an expectation, if someone won a primary, that they would then pay attention to those community meetings and want to be in the audience and be aware, so that they wouldn't be coming in totally blind to the process. To me, that would just be a sign of a good representative.
Boardmember Smith Juarez, any comments in that area?
I agree with Boardmember Hershey that there is a way to move forward with the process that does not delay implementation for another year. At the same time, it respects, you know, that Ms. Grimes and I are terming out and, you know, that there are candidates who will have opportunities to listen, to engage at the community meeting, and to have input into the process. But the work of the board is always ongoing, and so, you know, I think if the superintendent, and I think I heard Hershey, that that timeline would be a minimal to that, I don't have an objection to it.
Boardmember Willie?
Yeah, I think there has to be some sort of balance. I do, I just wonder if this process were not in the moment in time we're in, would we, would we think November is the right time, or would we think January? And so, I think all that stuff layered on. I'm wondering if there is a process where we do some of the information gathering, even in... even internally, to utilize the, the minds and the experience of the folks who are on the board, but then also have, uh, the process where once those folks are in in November, be able to sort of finalize that process with the new folks. Because I do know that coming in with the strategic plan already in place does feel a little, uh, limiting when you're a new board member. So I like the idea of having them be involved in community meetings, but that's not the same as when you're actually sitting around the table and making those final decisions or sort of the more larger decisions. So I'm wondering if there's a, sort of a, a staggering or a section of the process where we can do before, um, to get as much information from the folks who are seated around the table now, and then sort of have this period where we then transition into the last part. I think it sort of speaks to what everyone was saying, but to keep the, the process, keep the process going along.
Okay, thank you. So I guess what I'm hearing is that we would go ahead and, uh, set a, a goal of November of this year. And if for some reason, uh, we can't meet that goal, we'll do it as quickly as possible after November.
Right, and to Board Member Willie, the goal was to be done with the, the strategic plan by about now, I think, was originally. So we have already hit.
Right.
That pause button, uh, to reset. And certainly we're not going to be too far into this process, uh, before the primary in August. And I, I think that the races will probably be pretty clear by that point.
So, um, what I'm hearing is it sounds like there's some consensus to try to, uh, proceed in manner that has the board adopting its goals and guardrails, um, in November. So the superintendent can, uh, devise, um, the, uh, plan itself, um, in advance of, you know, beginning the process of creating the budgets for that's long twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, until I did sort of, um, December, January, February, uh, to devise, um, a portion of this process, uh, which is the implementation plan itself. Um, so I just want to check in, um, the board chair. Do you feel I have captured the consensus of the board after?
Uh, as far as I can determine, yes.
Can I, can I say something? Uh, I don't know if November just still, I mean, I'm in agreement with moving forward, but I wa, I don't see November being, being the time. I just feel like if we're talking about including everybody, if we're talking about getting, getting out and about, uh, to the community, being summer right now, then coming back, like I, I don't know if, I'm, I'm in agreement with moving forward with it, but I don't know if November is the time or if it's December or January. Superintendent said, we asked what would be too late. So my opinion would be to at least give us a little bit more room beyond November, but that's, that's my thought.
Um, uh, Madam Superintendent, once you've received, uh, the goals, these are the specific measurable goals that describe, um, what, uh, the board expects to see student performance look like, uh, in five years. Um, once you've received the goals and the guardrails, um, do you have any idea, um, once you have a chance to look through the materials sufficiently, you have an idea of how long it would take you to put together, um, the implementation, the five-year implementation plan?
How long for the implementation plan?
Yeah, um, I'm thinking. Um, the implementation plan, if, if, if the desire of the board is to make sure that implementation plan is tied to the budget process for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, then we would need to have it complete no later than the middle of Mar, by the time we go on spring break. I shouldn't say that because we never came back the last time we went on spring break. Um, but that would probably, if, if it's, we would need a good three, three to four months to put that in place.
So do you need that in?
Ms. Hershey, go ahead.
Completed the implementation plan by mid-March and it'll take you three months to develop it. Uh, it sounds like you need to get started on that at the very, at mid-December at the latest?
Yes, so probably when we come back, um, we can start it in mid-December, but we'll be on winter break and then when we come back, it will be full steam ahead.
It sounds like if, if the board wants this, uh, round of planning to have, uh, maximum influence on the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that the superintendent, in order to go back to the budget, would need to have, uh, the implementation plan by mid-March. In order to have it by mid-March, you'd need to have the goals and guardrails, uh, approved from the board by mid-December. Uh, and so I, I think the question then becomes, uh, is how important is it for the board, to the board to have, uh, this strategic planning work take effect in sort of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Um, in which case, it sounds like mid-December is the latest that you can complete your portion of the work. Or if you're comfortable with it not taking place until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, then, uh, you could, you could continually take into, in March to finish it off because they have plenty of time to get it done, uh, before next December.
Ms. Hershey?
So I would just like to remind particularly our, it's, you're not new as board members anymore because it's been a couple of years, is that when we did this strategic plan last time, it was just like, like a two or three-year plan. It was not a long plan because we knew we were going to be having a new superintendent. And what we have to remember, the work of the board is alive and ongoing. And there's never going to be a perfect time. We, we haven't gotten there yet, but I just want to point out that we're talking about a five-year strategic plan. We have a superintendent who is on a four-year contract and two years into that contract. So, you know, I know she wants to be here ten more, but we haven't had that conversation. But my point is, is that there's never the perfect time. There's a, there's a chance, um, that Dr. Green may want to retire. Um, and if that happens, it's going to be just like before, where, where the board has set a, a strategic plan and superintendent has come in to carry out that plan until they have a time to, to be engaged in the next strategic plan. So I just want to share, there's, there's never a perfect time on the board. And we have to remember that the work of the board is urgent, it's ongoing. And, um, my concern is our current strategic plan, I'm, wasn't that just a two-year plan? It, it was a two or three-year plan?
It was supposed to end in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, it was supposed to end in twenty-twenty. And so my point is, is I think that there's, there's an urgency, time is of the essence. And there's, there's always going to be, but, oh, but wait, how about? And I think we need to, to get on with the work that's at hand.
Well said. So the, so I think, uh, we want to continue the schedule for November of this year. And, uh, if for some strange reason, reason we don't meet that timeline, at least we'll have December in place to finish it, which would meet the, meet the, the timeline of having it implemented for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
The, the one of the, one of the things that I'm taking away in my notes from this is that, um, as we're customizing this plan, uh, uh, for the board's consideration when we bring it back, uh, that we need to be very intentional about finding ways to include, um, uh, potential board members, um, in the process.
Correct.
And so perhaps, so perhaps as soon as, uh, we know who all of the candidates are, you know, creating engagement opportunities for all of the candidates, you know, even before the elections, uh, take place, um, to make sure that they, um, that they've been included in the process. Uh, and so that's something I'm adding to my notes, uh, but it sounds like you all would not be comfortable because, uh, people came in, in November and we was completely unaware of what was going on. That we need to build a process that tries to cause as much awareness for them as possible. And I think we can accomplish that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I think, uh, I think, uh.
Can I just, just to clarify?
Yes, Ms. Grimes?
Um, so is that November going to be the, we're, we're still, what are we?
The goal, the goal is to have the plan completed by November of this year.
Okay.
That's the goal.
To vote on it in November?
But with the flexibility to move to December, but to be focusing on, on track because it only goes through twenty-twenty. Time's ticking.
I hear you.
All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate and, uh, look forward to working with you and hearing from you.
Uh, I will go to work with your staff on creating customized version of the planning process, uh, uh, with ideally being able to get that back to you, um, um, next month for you all to sign off on, um, the plan and then immediately begin the implementation. Uh, I, I do want to suggest, um, immediate, uh, movement with implementation once we come back. Um, in general, I agree with your sentiments, uh, that, uh, the most ideal scenario is to visit with people, um, in person. However, I would invite you to consider that there, that this whole COVID-nineteen thing has, um, expanded, um, the universe of people in our communities who are comfortable with using Zoom and technologies like that to meet. And there's probably going to be a significant portion of your community who feel more comfortable, um, engaging from home, if that's an option, than in being in a large room full of people. Um, and so, um, in my intention, I would come back with you with recommendations, both for virtual engagement opportunities for people who don't feel comfortable being out of their homes right now, as well as in-person opportunities. So just, uh, want you to know to expect it makes a difference for largely for safety and, um, community comfort reasons.
Right, we want to comply with all the CDC requirements. And I think giving people that option is, is, is certainly something we want to have in place. Any other questions?
Well, thank you all for your time and, you know, have a, um, I'll be at office and get back to you really good upon. Uh, thank you very much and have a blessed day.
All right, thank you. We're gonna, uh, recess for, uh.
Is upstairs open?
I hope, I, I hope downstairs, uh, upstairs.
They're closer one.
Yeah, we're gonna recess for one hour so everybody can grab a bite to eat and, uh, we'll.
At particular PTA, they set their meetings for the semester.
Oh, good.
They decided to do one Thursday and Wednesday, so just one Saturday and Tuesday.
Okay.
So do you have any particular monthly plan? I've already got, uh, August.
Thursday, August twenty-seventh is a bad.
Which one?
I need to, I need to schedule like that.
The new due.
I might want to re, because it's a, it's scheduled in my scheduling though.
Thursdays?
August twenty-seventh?
Um, well.
That is, that's going to be the emergency. And the accidental Saturday.
It's Monday.
Accidental Saturday. I mean, it's just going to be a crazy day, but whatever.
One day is not, it's just.
That was going to be particularly crazy.
Um, what more is going to take that?
I'll do, I'll do September.
September, okay, I'll schedule now.
And then, um, usually we overlap. I'll do May too, if you need a second one.
Okay, um, May, consider one for September, okay, okay.
Is anybody up there with them?
Mm-hmm.
Is anybody upstairs with these people?
I'm on the way.
The chair, the morning, the chill. Any of them in school?
No.
I mean, sometimes we need a hurry. Is the cafeteria open?
Closed since one-thirty? Yes.
Oh, it's one-thirty and eleven.
Yes.
Would anybody be kicking them out? That's the question. Oh. Is it what?
There is no May.
Sure, I usually just, um, want to make sure someone touched bases with them before summer because I know that they like disband, so. April, April's fine.
Warren was, he was gonna go past that time, whether he wanted to or not. Do you think this was going to be this like, this hard?
I don't know.
I said, did you, did you think this was going to be this hard? Um, different?
This is the story. This is even a new story right here.
Um.
No?
No.
That's the short answer.
Yeah. Yeah, people will go, it'll be big.
So many people have been like.
Smith-Warres, moving back. All right.
You have so much on there.
Both of you are. Oh, nobody's back on there.
Okay, wait.
Do they need a call?
Yeah, so many jumps on the line and the whole unit stops, so nobody's jumping.
Who, what are we doing now?
Oh, so they have to call back.
They gotta call back in.
Oh.
Right.
It's one real high.
Okay.
Okay.
You can just text them and let them know, you know, they're getting stopped. Just text them and let them know, you know, they're gonna stop.
So, the other night, did you all hear, could you hear the woman who was talking on the line when we called in?
Yeah.
I, I was texting Nina, just like, can we get another line?
I was so nervous.
'Cause she was just... I was like, how's she on this?
I was worried that it was, somebody was gonna think it was like, like a bus.
Right, 'cause somebody said, is your line muted? I'm like, yes, that's not me.
Get to make sure it goes through.
Your magic.
Do you have their numbers to check them?
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa's got it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna reconvene our workshop and exciting part is yet to come, Dr. Green?
Thank you, Chairman Jones, I'm not sure I'm putting those words out, that it's the exciting part, definitely. Probably a lot of information, a lot of people would like to know about, but, uh, my presentation on safer reopening for schools today, I, even though it's a presentation, it, I'd like it to also be like a conversation, so if you wanna ask something while I'm presenting, I just prefer that you just go ahead and ask, uh, while we're on that particular slide, so, so that we can hopefully address any questions that the board may have. Um, when we look at the safer reopening of schools, we put in place, at first they were planning assumptions, and then as information came out, as we receive additional information, we started saying these are now planning principles. Uh, the following parameters that are outlined are things that we want the board to know that more than likely this will occur. For example, uh, August tenth, I think, when I met with individual board members, I, I said that was a, an assumption or a consideration, and when the governor came out and said schools will open, then that no longer became an assumption, it became part of our principles that, uh, whatever we're doing, it has to be ready to go by August tenth.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just to jump in right there, uh, 'cause there was conversation earlier about, about polling, and then we know, and I think the governor said schools open, and then we said the RNC is coming to Jacksonville. So, my question is, is are we anticipating a couple of interruptions to the, to the start of school? Um, a- and are we just still good to go with, with the tenth, even though there might be some dis- disruption to ability to get around parts of the city?
Um, we still feel that we're ready to go August tenth. There will be disruptions regardless of the RNC throughout the school year. And through the presentation, you're gonna see that there will be the possibilities of start, stop times, that we will have to close a classroom or close a school if we have an outbreak at a school. But as far as that particular event, we believe we, we would be best served of having as many of our students in our schools during that time. Um, but it's the presentation today, which the very last slide, we do go back to some assumptions. Whatever we're doing today, um, six weeks from now, we might have to pivot, because we may have more cases or something might change, uh, at the state level.
I only ask a question, 'cause I've gotten some emails about, are we gonna change the start date to after Labor Day, um, and that's why I asked, so thank you.
Yes. Uh, our goal is to implement the guidelines from the CDC and FDAO wherever possible. Through the presentation, you'll see that there are a couple of, uh, instances where we already know we will not be able to implement those guidelines, so we tried to put something, uh, else, or what we call another barrier to, um, support students and staff if we're not able to meet the CDC guidelines. We've received input from a, a wide variety of medical professionals, you'll see the list there. We, we've spoken to professionals at Wilson's Children's Hospital, UF Health, Florida Department of Health, and the Duval County Medical Society, as well as I spoke into the State Medical Society and other medical professionals through, um, the superintendent's organization's fads. We've had input from employees, labor organizations, students, parents, contract providers, and other stakeholders. Uh, all of that input sorta is what has framed this initial plan that we are presenting today. So, the information I have about the share on the planning principles is that we anticipate that our core classroom sizes will remain, uh, the same under the class size, um, provision. So, grades pre-K to three, the class size eighteen students, four through eight, twenty-two students, and nine through twelve, twenty-five students. Uh, however, some of the scheduling that each school is allowed to do, we think will either lower these sizes or, um, the only reason it would go up is if there is a school that their projected numbers are larger than we projected them in the spring. Uh, our goal is also that everything that is needed be purchased, delivered, and installed by August tenth. Uh, we will be cutting it short when we talk about the desk guards, that's going to, you know, we have to bring that item before the board, and so that will be the one thing that will, uh, keep us up at night, hoping we can get that done by August tenth. Uh, all teachers, school-based staff, students will be provided per- personal protective equipment. Uh, our classrooms, our goal is to space desks and tables six feet apart. Uh, again, there are some rooms that we can easily do that, and then there are other classrooms that that will be, uh, a challenge. And again, every time that we feel like we can't meet the CDC guidelines, we look for another layer of, uh, protection so that we can be safer in our reopening. Uh, pre-kindergarten through second grade students, they will all be provided face shields, those are different than face coverings that, that, Ms. Hershey and I both were at a meeting, and a parent brought up my child needing to see the teacher's lips, being able to enunciate, and was very pleased when I said, well, we have, uh, a resource for that, a face shield, which is clear and, and students and teachers can, uh, both clearly see each other. Uh, though it says that they will be provided face shields, still, if they ride a bus, um, they will also be given a face covering because of, for the issues dealing with transportation. Our upper elementary students, uh, and secondary students will all be provided facial coverings from the district, though they can, uh, as you heard earlier about the code of conduct, they can bring their own facial covering, it just must meet the guidelines, uh, established in the student code of conduct. When we look at, um, ensuring, again, opening up as safe as possible, enhanced sanitation has continued to come to the forefront. Uh, Mr. Suarez is working with our custodial contractor to have more custodians during school hours so that we can work on, uh, intensified cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched places. Um, one of the things we are trying to do at the elementary level is having a static group so that students stay with each other all day, and more of teacher mov- movement, so art and music. Teachers may be asked to, uh, move to the classroom so that the students have an opportunity to, to kinda stay static. However, much of what we're learning about COVID nineteen also talks about being outside, so we will be encouraging, uh, classrooms to make sure that they still attend physical education, that they still, uh, ensure that they're getting recess every day, and if you have the opportunity to have outdoor class, classes and if the weather permits, we encourage it.
Before you go to the next slide, I have a question. You can finish.
Oh.
Were you moving?
No, I thought I heard a question on the phone, but, um, early release days, we, we...
Oh, it, it wasn't, it, it wasn't a question, but I think it did just tell us it's gonna cut us off in one minute. So, I'm, I'm just checking the board office to see what we should do.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, about the facial coverings really quickly, when do you anticipate, um, children, families being able to get those coverings? Would that be prior to the start of school? Or how will they get them?
We are working on a, a process, um, and this process is actually gonna be in the form of a video, that's sort of, uh, Dr. Christner is leading that charge. It's sort of a training video for parents that will talk about, um, how the school day will look and, and what, what do they need to do? Because, again, our goal is not to, uh, be the facial covering police, the facial problem cleaner, the keeper. The goal is, we're gonna inform our parents and parents training the students, as well as a training video for our employees, so that everyone kinda knows the process, understands the process. Uh, we will also be sharing in that video, oh, even though we're providing you a facial cover, we recommend that you purchase additional facial coverings, we will tell them what happens if they lose their facial coverings, we will just simply give them a disposable, so there'll be a, several videos that will sort of walk, whether it's an employee or a parent through, through the reopening.
Okay, and we think they're gonna get their physical?
That whole video will explain to them, if we can't get the facial coverings to them, then they will start with disposable at the very beginning. If they're not able, because some schools, uh, may be deciding they don't wanna do orientation in person, that they do it virtually, so the actual first day that you might see students would be the first day of school. So, we're telling them, if that is the case, this is the procedure you should follow, and this is what we will do. But the goal would be to try to get them to them before they start at school, but we anticipate that that would be a challenge.
Sure, and then, uh, along with that, I heard you say that the, um, young ones that might take transportation would maybe have a mask in addition to their facial, their face shield. Does that mean the face shield would stay in the classroom?
Yes, the face shield stays in the classroom.
Okay.
So, it's only for classroom. Um, early release days, we will use those days for, um, deep cleaning of schools. So, even though on the calendar it says early release, they're gonna be early released doing Duval Home Room, so that, that gives our custodios time to go and do a deep cleaning in all of our elementary schools, um, for that day. Students will still be in school, they'll just be, uh, doing school through Duval Home Room so that, uh, no one has to be there to, um, experience what they do with a deep cleaning, with the fogger and, and going through. But that, our goal is to help increase that sanitation at the school level.
So, does that mean school for all students will take place at home on Wednesdays?
Yeah, on that one day a month.
Oh, one day a month, okay, I thought it was, okay.
Yeah, the, the early release day.
Alright. I think I told you I had a problem with that, 'cause it was moving all the time, is it gonna be the same day, or is it gonna be a floating day?
No, the early release day, the once a month early release day, that, that's the day.
Are parents gonna know it's the third Wednesday of the month, or is it gonna sometimes be the second or the fourth? I just know as a parent...
I think it's mostly the third Wednesday of the month, unless it was something...
I'm just thinking parents have to plan, and I just know for me, there were all these rules that made it move, and I would sometimes forget if it was an early release day or not, and I'm just, if we're keeping students at home on that day, I just think being able to put on your calendar as the second Wednesday or the third Wednesday is important, that's all.
I believe the calendar committee worked hard to keep it consistent.
Okay.
Looks like it's the fourth.
I, it usually depends on like holidays, so it, the calendar, black and white, it was hard to tell what, um, what, what Wednesday. Yeah. It, it, for the most part, is the same week. I think when you get to November and December, that's when it changes, because of the holidays during those two months. When can we reopen? I shared this, uh, particular slide at, uh, about two workshops ago, when we talked about all the considerations or the key levers we needed to keep in mind, this one has not changed. Um, the CDC has given recommendations on safeguards to reopening. Uh, our reopening needs to be consistent with state and local orders, and as you, we've all heard, the governor, the expectation is schools will open as normal. Um, putting measures in place to protect high-risk individuals. Uh, we are also making sure not only are our students receiving, uh, PPE, but also all of our employees. All of our employees will receive facial coverings, face shields, and gloves, so that will be available for every employ- um, school-based employee. Uh, systems exit for screening employees and students daily for systems, symptoms. Uh, a, a couple of slides I will share, something new that we're, um, developing, and hopefully we'll have it in place by August tenth, and that health and safety actions are in place and ongoing monitoring is in place. You'll see in our presentation that we, we pretty much address each of those bullet items. In kind of reminding the board, we had a process set in place, um, from April to October. Uh, we are still, uh, on time and remaining with the timeline, we've developed the initial plan. Uh, we will work with other groups to solicit feedback regarding the, the draft plan, and then the month of July, um, you'll see slides that talk about gradual phase in a plan designed for summer activities and athletics. Uh, schools and departments finalize installation of mitigating, mitigation measures, and committee finalizing any outstanding requirements needed prior to reopening. Uh, as I said, stated, uh, every week we seem to get a new, um, batch of information that we have to process and determine, how does this impact Duval? And three weeks from now, I can't say that we, we might not receive something different. Uh, there might be a push to, okay, we said we wanted schools to open August, uh, we're now asking school districts to consider something different. I think it's important to remind everyone that throughout this process, our goal is still focused on student learning and well-being. Teaching and learning is our primary mission, and to make that still a priority in these abnormal times is, is definitely a challenge. But I know that our principals, our teachers, district staff, school-based staff, we're all up for the challenge, and we continue to provide that support. Today, principals are in training, uh, not about COVID nineteen, they're in training about how we're going to support our students when they return to school. They're in training today about equity, we have a lot of things happening on the national scale that has the, um, not the ability to impact, it is impacting Duval, and we want our principals and school leaders to be prepared for the upcoming school year. So, we are still focused on assessing the learning loss, attending to social emotional needs, addressing the learning gap, spiraling back to content that may, that we may need to go back and readdress, infuse the new standards. The best standards are to be implemented this upcoming school year in, in our primary grades, and Dr. Christner and the team has worked very diligently to ensure that we are infusing those new state standards. And then accelerate learning. We cannot, uh, expect our students to be successful on the FSA or the end-of-year state testing if we just stay in remediation. We have to ensure that students get access to grade-level content, and that is, uh, a combination of interventions and acceleration, and hopefully, um, working with school-based leaders, we can determine how much of a gap we are expecting, and then develop a plan on how to close that gap. You may be hearing a lot from other districts about what they are doing for their school district, whether their, um, surrounding districts, but I caution anyone to compare one district to another. As you can see, when you look at the number of COVID nineteen cases, Duval, uh, is well ahead of St. John's, Clay, and Nassau. You put them together and it's still, um, not half of the cases that are, uh, being experienced in Duval. This data was pulled on June twenty-second. Uh, we know that by the time school starts, this number is going to be much higher. So, the plan that we have worked on and are implementing for Duval is based on... plan that we have worked on and are implementing for Duval is based on our number of cases. So that's why our plan may be different than St. John's or Clay County. They're not experiencing as many cases as we are in Duval. So another way to support our schools opening is let's have a soft opening in July. Let's look at providing programs on our campus. So we will have summer camp. Some of them will be KHA camps and others will be the school system extended day camps. We will have voluntary pre-K. We currently have about 12 students already registered for voluntary pre-K and their classes, I believe, started this week. We are going to open up five school sites for summer school. So we will have face-to-face summer school in the month of July. The state just put out kindergarten transition. Department of Education is concerned about the learning loss and part of the state's CARES Act money, they are implementing a kindergarten transition. It requires us to provide kindergarten ready, it's not kindergarten readiness, but for us to assess how ready these little ones are for kindergarten and then provide support and then assess at the end of the program how much learning they've gained. So that will also be in the month of July. Athletics started on June 15th with Phase 1. July 1 will start Phase 2. That Phase 2 is that they can go into the weight room and start lifting weights as long as they are following the safety protocols. And we will have band and cheer camp. Question was asked about the pools. The pools officially are turned over to the city on July 1st and it's my understanding that they will open the pools. The city of Jacksonville approached us. Councilwoman Priestley Jackson offered free COVID-19 testing for the students that are participating in summer programs. They are allowing them to have two tests. They can do a test before they begin the summer program and then they can have another test at the end of the summer program. They are offering this to our students for free. As well as they are, I don't have a final word on this, but offering it to our employees prior to the beginning of the school year. Free testing. Ms. Young is working with Councilwoman Priestley Jackson to get further details, the locations, what do families need to do, how do we get the word out to those families, and how do we get the word out to our employees? If that is worked out, when will they test, where will they test, and how long does it take to get the information back? And so this is an effort to support the school district in reopening. Did I, nevermind. Thought I would pause and see if I had any questions about that.
No, you're doing a great job.
Part of the CDC guidelines state that we should institute a medical screening for employees and children. That medical screening is asking three questions and then taking their temperature. Our IT department, our amazing IT department, is working on an employee app. So when you wake up in the morning, you'll just be able to go on your phone and answer the three questions. And depending on how you answer those three questions, you will get a response. So if one of the questions says, is someone in your family currently diagnosed with COVID-19? If you say yes, then you're going to get a message that says something to the tune, please contact your supervisor, you probably need to go to your healthcare provider and not go into work today. But whatever the response that is given, the system will respond back to the employee about what they need to do. The information is only kept for that day. So once all employees have checked in, it sends an email to the principal that says, following people will not be at work today for, because, will not be at work. We have the ability to do this with students. We're just not quite there yet. We want to see how this works with employees first and ensure that we are maintaining the employees' privacy. So we are going to take baby steps with this. But this is an opportunity that the school will not have to have these sheets of paper out every day for employees to answer the three questions. They will still get their temperature checked when they enter the school building and that is the second part of the medical screening that the CDC indicates we should do. So part of reopening, we had to look at a number of potential areas that we just can't meet the CDC guidelines. And the first and biggest area is student transportation. Under the CDC guidelines, they recommend one student per seat, every other seat. Under that guideline, we could only transport between nine to 11 students. And on an ESE bus, it was as low as three to five students. We, as you see our numbers, our daily ridership is approximately 49,000 students. If we had to transport nine to 11, we'd need to start the day before to just get them there for school to start. So we clearly could not meet that guideline. So our next goal was, let's look at what would it take if we only put one student per seat? That is our ultimate goal. Our goal is to try to have only one student per seat. But we still will not be able to meet that on every single route. Even in staggering the load, double runs, we still will not be able to mitigate the overcrowding. So right now, transportation is working on a plan that on our best-case scenario, it'll be one student per seat. The worst-case scenario is two students per seat. We have indicated that if you have to go beyond two students per seat, then you need to develop another route and that's what could lead to a double run, that you can't pick up all the students at that, at that stop or at the multiple stops on the same run. That is why we will be requiring students to wear facial coverings when they are being transported on our school buses because it will be anything, anywhere from one per seat to two per seat. Routes will be equipped with hand sanitizer for student use when boarding and departing the bus. So when a student boards the bus, they're to utilize hand sanitizer. When they depart from the bus, they are to utilize hand sanitizer. Also, if students come to the bus stop and they do not have a facial covering, the driver is just to give the student a disposable facial covering, a disposable mask. Routes will be scheduled to allow time to disinfect buses between routes and at the end of each day. So once the high school routes are complete, they are to disinfect the buses before they begin their elementary route. When the elementary route completes, they are to disinfect their buses again and then start the middle school route. By doing this, it will impact school starting and ending times. Today, we don't know the exact impact, but we are confident that some schools may have to start earlier and other schools may have to start later. We may have to adjust elementary and middle school by possibly up to 30 minutes with the exception of the lowest 300 schools which have a requirement of additional time. This is to allow for the adjusted routes. And as it states at the bottom, school hours for select magnet schools may be adjusted to accommodate transportation schedules. The first couple of weeks of school, transportation, transportation's going to be a challenge because we're normally accustomed to, you're standing there, we pick you up. We still will pick you up because we can't leave a student at a bus stop. But it will take several weeks for calibrating these stops.
Thank you. I have a quick question. So for, is it possible, perhaps maybe in these videos that we're talking about being able to put out for parents, that we have some sort of communication when we encourage parents that are able to transport? I know that mostly, I would assume maybe mostly those that can transport do. But I mean, there's a bus stop right in front of my house, my house, and so I mean, that would be pretty convenient. So I could just put my kid out there and they could go off. But I might have the actual ability to transport. So I think that just that one, like, hey, parents, if you can, please consider trying to make that accommodation would go, may, could go a long way. The other question that I would have is, how will we know or do we ever know how many students would be on a bus? I mean, do we have, before school starts, any sense of how many children would show up at a bus stop?
Yes. The transportation has their, well, they use their trend data and their information that's in the system. So that's why we know, okay, we knew we couldn't do every other seat. Now, we wouldn't need any information to know that. But when we looked at just one per seat, they knew, okay, we would have to have multiple runs if that's all we would allow on the bus. And so then we went back, well, what about two per seat? So they're able to run through their system, the routes, and make a determination, okay, we can do this entire bus. Or no, we cannot do this entire bus because we know at stop X, there are 15 students at that stop and the next stop there's, so how do we split that up or how do we change the route so that we can reduce the number of students on a particular bus? But we can always encourage parents to bring their children to school. When they see the information that they will be required to wear facial covering, they may make that decision on their own that I will transport my child to school.
That's kind of my thought too. And at some point, if we are reaching back out to parents to try to get some numbers on what people's choices are for things, maybe transportation is one of those questions we could include, like, do you intend to use?
Well, transportation, for the first time, will be registering students for ridership this year.
Okay.
So that transportation will have better numbers. How about that? I don't want to say, because if someone shows up at a stop, they can't leave them there just because you're not registered. They're going to work to have everyone register for transportation so that that driver can at least have some level of confidence. I'm supposed to have Warren, Lori, and Elizabeth. And why is Cheryl standing there? Because Cheryl's supposed to be somewhere else.
She didn't necessarily not follow those directions, she's due. Can you just clarify again for us? We had this conversation, but I think it's relevant when we're talking about transportation, especially because you brought up, we cannot leave someone standing at a bus stop. That temperature checking is not a procedure at the bus stop because even if somebody seemed to have a temperature, we wouldn't abandon a child on the corner.
That is correct. That is why we're not doing temperature checks on the bus. One, also, time is very challenging to have a bus stopped and they're checking temperatures because a particular stop could have up to 10 students. But the second issue is that when you still, you can't leave them there. And that is why we're requiring students to wear facial coverings because that is the purpose of them to, in case you are sick, you're protecting the person who's sitting next to you. So yes, we will not, yes, no, we will not be doing temperature checks on bus.
Thank, I appreciate that. I just think that that's an important piece of the puzzle. And as we're thinking about the timing of when we put in some of these system checks, people might not think about that. And it's important to have an awareness, so.
I have a question. I think about, I think it's great when we talk about doubling up bus routes, but then I'm like, I know the bus, the transportation line item is very large. And if we're doubling bus routes, I just can't imagine the impact to the budget for having to run more than one bus as specific route. So I was just wondering, the financial impact increased bus routes would have to our budget?
There will be an increase to our transportation's budget. I will share this. Everything that you saved in transportation this year, you needed it, you will now need it for transportation for the upcoming school year.
And maybe some more, maybe.
And maybe some more.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it crazy to incentivize parents to bring their child? I mean, you know, like, if you don't take our health insurance, then you get a little, you know, I don't know if that's our thing, but some people, if you don't have health insurance. If you don't use transportation, it costs us less. I don't know. Just thinking outside the box. Food for thought.
See, look what happened.
You get a free lunch.
Gas card, I don't know. I don't want to go full.
Well, this is a conversation that the board, one day, will need to have. A lot that impacts our transportation is magnet school transportation. But that's not the purpose of today's workshop.
Please don't go there.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was a parent during that time. I mean, I still am a parent. Children in magnet schools, I remember that decision.
I know. And you get really, really into it at times.
Yeah, let's not. Let's just say it's true.
I'm not going, as I said, I'm not going down that road.
We have a conflict of interest.
So, other, so the next part is kind of walking you through all the things that we are putting inside our schools. So when students, whether they come to school in a car, they walk, or they're riding on a bus, when they enter into the school, every school will be required to have an entrance plan. And that entrance plan is checking the temperature of all of the students and the adults that are coming inside the building. So part of that process of ensuring that we check students when they come inside the building goes back to the CDC stating that each school should have a medical screening process. And it doesn't really indicate that we should ask the three questions of students. The number one thing they point out is that we should check their temperature and ensure that they don't have a temperature of 100.4 or higher. If they do have a temperature of 100.4 or higher, the school is to immediately take the child to the clinic and call the parent. This would be no different if this child had the flu. If they had a temperature, we would take them to the clinic and call the parent. And we are indicating that schools will follow that same process. In addition, we will provide signage promoting social distancing measures, also constantly reminding students to understand that washing their hands frequently is a good thing and that they need to avoid touching their face. And our goal is trying not to say it because soon as someone tells you, don't touch your face, what do you want to do? You want to touch your face. So just having the signage and trying to remind them of all the things that will help them be safer. We will also have sandwich boards located at different entrances, stickers that the schools will determine what would be the best location. Every front office will have a plexiglass barrier for the reception area. We will be encouraging schools to ensure that parents understand their process. The CDC recommends, especially locations that have young children, that you avoid outside that you avoid outside individuals who, that is not their normal day to come into the building. So we will be limiting access to individuals that are either just wanting to come visit the school. They will have to have a process when parents want to come and check out their child. There has to be a sort of line that says, no one goes beyond this location unless they are employees or students in the school. We, we've talked to schools that, for the first nine weeks, we will not allow field trips. Where we want students to be inside the school and able to move freely within the school, but that outside individuals that normally would not be inside the building on, on a five-day-a-week purpose would not be allowed to go past a certain location. So, I'm, that will already be concerns for parents. They, you know, on the first day of school, you want to walk your little one to their classroom. They will not, they will not be allowed to do that this year. It will be, come to the front, let the child get their temperature taken, and then an adult that works at the school will ensure that the child gets to the classroom. There will be signage in the transition and common areas. Each school will be given the template so that they can easily print their own signs and, and be able to install them in the locations that they feel best suits that particular sign. We will have signage about social distancing, sixty apart. We will have signage, again, about washing hands, about wearing their facial coverings during transition. Again, the goal is just to keep informing students about the best practices that they should use to ensure that they are creating a safer environment for themselves and for our teachers and other employees that are working at the school. Classroom conditions. This was the location that we felt students had to be able to remove their facial covering. That's where they're going to spend the bulk of their time. They're going to spend the majority of their time in their classroom. And we wanted to create an environment where students could be able to have really good rigorous instruction in teaching and learning, but at the same time, how are we making that space, again, safer? So for our classrooms that are serving grades three and above, we are installing what we call desk guards. Those desk guards are like two-sided. It supports the student in front of the student and on the side of the student. And, and the entrance into their desk, they're supported by the other row of desks with their shields up on, on the opposite side. So basically, the student is somewhat in a more protective environment with a shield in the front and on the side, and the other desk with their shields on the side. We will also review shields for tables. We are still debating whether it's a single-side shield or a two-sided shield. I believe we're going to rest on the two-sided shield and ensure that even though we will have these shields, tables and desks are as far apart as we can possibly place them. One of the things that elementary schools like to do is having small group learning. We've given every school an opportunity to develop a plan at their school on how you will do small group learning. But if your table is impeding the opportunity to space the desks six feet apart, the schools know that you have to remove that table out of that classroom. Our goal is to ensure that we try to meet the CDC guidelines as much as possible. Student safety. Again, students will receive facial coverings and they're to be warned when they're either riding on a bus or moving throughout the building outside of their classroom. We do not want students wearing facial coverings on playgrounds when they're having recess. We just believe, one, it just gives it more opportunity to get dirty instead of being protective. And, again, the information we're receiving, it's better when they're outside. So when students transition to other classes or they're going to the restroom that's not inside their classroom, they need to wear a facial covering. We will provide large hand sanitizer bottles with, in every single classroom. We encourage the classroom teachers to, when students enter the classroom, that they utilize the hand sanitizer. Anytime they leave the classroom, that they utilize the hand sanitizer. Even though our custodial staff will be cleaning common areas and disinfecting high-touch points, they are not going to be able to be at every classroom door, cleaning every doorknob every moment of the day. And so the students, when you leave, you use hand sanitizer. When you return, you use hand sanitizer. For teachers, we will supply the reusable face shields, cloth coverings, and a supply of gloves. I think I said that earlier, but we wanted to make sure that any employee who's going to be at a school, they will have all three of those items available to them.
I have a quick question. I, I know this is something that came up, and I can't remember where we landed. Will teachers have the option to request, or is there any plan to provide any other additional shield for, for staff, for teachers?
We, we met with the principals, and we will provide opportunities that, if they want to invest in other types of shields, that we are going to give them that information. And we also shared that we need to deal with it on a, for high risk, or there's a concern. It will be dealt with on a case by case. We didn't want to just say that it, each person may have different issues.
And that's exactly what I was thinking, was for those high-risk, extra-vulnerable staff people to have the additional support or barrier.
So what you have is a sample of the desk guards that I talked about. Even though option one, a student desk is real, that is not that large, and we just could not find a picture with a student desk. Also, looking at the possibility of shields on, in the computer labs, the, the single-line shield that would separate students from each other, especially in our high schools, computer labs are, are used a lot. But that, that's a sample of the physical barrier that we want to put in each classroom as an extra layer of protection for both the teacher and student. Though we talked about a lot about what we're doing to, and, and when you go back to the title slide, it says safer. What we're doing is trying to make our schools safer. But we will have cases. We will have cases of individuals that are diagnosed with COVID-19. And we need to ensure that we have an appropriate procedure, working in conjunction with the Department of Health, in place. And so we have closing and reopening procedures. What happens when an employee or student tests positive for COVID-19? The district contacts the Department of Health. At that point, the Department of Health takes sort of jurisdiction. DOH performs a contact investigation. Our nursing staff, Ms. Young is the lead on, I'm sure she enjoys this title, the lead on working with COVID-19, to ensure that we keep the privacy of any employee or child. That's why we limit from the district who works with DOH. And our nursing staff, along with Ms. Young, works with them to conduct that investigation. DOH determines individuals who will need to self-isolate. They tell us who needs to self-isolate. They tell us the proximity of time that they need to isolate. They determine the level of interaction that may need to happen between the school administration and the parents. They tell us what we need to do. Based on the outcome, as I just said, DOH provides the guidance and recommendations, whether it's closure and self-isolation, or just closure and deep, deep cleaning for a particular classroom or a particular school. DOH gives us that guidance. So when we look at closing and reopening, we've, we've kind of put it in three categories. There is a possibility we could only be asked to close a classroom, that based on the information, they believe we need to close a particular classroom for fourteen days. And in that situation, if it, that classroom is closed, then those students that were in that classroom can't come to school for fourteen days. They will have to self-isolate. If you look at the chart, what is the instructional delivery? That classroom of students and the teacher would all move to Duval Home Room for those fourteen days so that we can continue the consistency of instruction happening for those students. A school closure, that could be due to, it says school-wide outbreak, but we've not been told what the school-wide mean. Is that five cases? Is that ten cases? Whatever DOH tells us is that threshold, then we could possibly have to close a school. And again, DOH would tell us, how long will the students and the staff of that school need to self-isolate? Again, moving to Duval Home Room to continue the consistency of instruction. A district-wide closure, that would have to involve city and state government. Just as we went to district-wide closure, the state came out and said, we're going to home instruction, closing all the schools. It will require a major intervention from the state and local indicating the reasons why. So if the mayor puts out a stay-at-home order, that has the ability to impact the school district and possibly look at a district-wide closure. Or if the governor puts out a stay-at-home order, that would impact a district-wide. And again, we would move to Duval Home Room.
I have a quick question. Are there any assurances from the Department of Health how quickly we would be able to make this decision? For example, if I have a small, a young child who starts to present with a fever, we send that child to the quarantine space or that isolation space, wait for the parent to come. Now we have to go to the doctor and get some, some sort of information. Maybe I have an ear infection, maybe I have strep throat, maybe I have COVID-19. I don't, how quickly do we get test results back? How quickly would we move into a decision where we would close a classroom?
It has to be based on a positive COVID-19. They've tested positive. So in your scenario, a child has a fever, we're going to send them home and say, you need to see your pediatrician or the, the, the information that we would send home if the child had an ear infection. But we can't, we would not, DOH would not do anything at that point because they do not have a confirmed case of COVID-19. The confirmed case is what starts the clock.
And so, and, and our students may not have access to something like rapid testing. So it may be several days before we would know whether they were a confirmed case?
Yes.
I, I just want to be realistic with people about what the expectation is, you know, in, in the classroom and why some of these mitigation strategies, like facial coverings, would be so important.
Yes. Again, we have to treat every student as, if it's a fever, we're going to treat, we're going to treat them as if we think they have COVID-19. Or if they're coming with other symptoms, it is isolate, call the parent. And those, those would be the same procedures we would follow, even if we weren't going through COVID-19. When flu season hits, that's the same procedure we would follow. They're presenting symptoms, isolate them, call the parent.
Dr. Green, what happens in the interim? You isolate the student. They test him for coronavirus, and it takes three or four days for that test result to come back. What do they do in the interim during that waiting period to that particular classroom? Do you, you continue to have classes normal, or do you continue? Do you start some type of isolation of that class until the results are returned?
Chairman James, I'm, what, we do, we do have our supervisor of nurse, nursing here, Juana. I'm so sorry, her name just left me.
That's the one that's laughing, so.
Juana, the last name just left me. That she can give more details, but we do have to remember that just because you have a fever doesn't mean you're testing positive for COVID-19. We're just calling a parent and say, go, you need to.
So I assume from that, the class will continue as normal until
Yes.
there's some confirmation that the person does have COVID-19. And then that's when the Department of Health will step in and make the determination.
Yes, but.
Hi, it's Juana Wade. Thank you, Dr. Green. So we'll continue all the same policies and procedures that we have because we don't know whether it's sore throat, whether it's an ear infection. So we're going to still disinfect that classroom as we would throughout the school day. Regardless, we should always be practicing those disinfectant and cleaning procedures. To go back to the question that was asked earlier as well, how fast we get those test results back depends upon where they're tested and what test they use. So some are back within eight hours, and others can take up to two weeks. But we're always exercising our social distancing and the cleaning and disinfectant procedures that we have in place. So if you kind of keep that mindset that we're always on guard, we always expect that we could potentially have a positive, then we're in a much better position.
Is there a, a person, I know you said, you mentioned Councilperson Brenda Priestley Jackson, working with us to be able to get some testing for our staff or students? I mean, is there a way to partner with a testing facility that uses maybe a test so that we, we can try to get a more quick turnaround? Is, is that an option, or is that something we've even attempted to explore?
No, that is an option. We have attempted to explore, and I think there is an opportunity. I'm, I'm not, I can't speak about the free testing.
Sure.
And that was offered to us, so we're not going to say no.
No, absolutely.
So. It would be working with the, the health, the health committee, the health insurance committee. I'm pretty sure we'll have that conversation. But through our insurance, Florida Blue, they've already, I believe, sent us some information about who should you partner with or, or some information about partnering with a particular testing.
And obviously, a two-week turnaround is risky. That's, that's much more risky than forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours.
So, again, what I just covered were the resources that we are providing each school to, again, open safer with these mitigating factors that should help us stem the spread of COVID-19. What does that look like as it relates to instruction? We are implementing several options for our families, and we got that information from the survey that we sent out, and, and it was very clear. Some families felt very comfortable coming back, and other families are not so comfortable coming back. So we felt, whatever we're, we're doing, we need to try to be accommodating for where families are in, in this process. So for elementary, we are looking at students in grades pre-K to five will participate full-time in their 2020, 21 enrolled school. That means they will come to school five days a week. If parents aren't comfortable, then they can choose a virtual option. We have two virtual options. We have the full-time regional virtual instruction delivered through Duval Home Room, what they were, what they were used to when we closed schools down after spring break. So they're accustomed to utilizing Duval Home Room. We will offer it through a regional process. So we will have Duval Home Room north, south, east, and west. And the elementary schools will be divided in those quadrants. And parents that are. and parents that are concerned about losing their spot at their enrolled school, they don't need to be, they remain enrolled at that school of enrollment, but they will receive their instruction at home through Duval Home Room. Option two is still DVIA. We have a number of elementary families that use DVIA and we want to make sure they don't think they have to leave DVIA. They can stay on DVIA. Or if elementary families want to utilize DVIA, which is a full-time virtual school. That means you are withdrawing from your current school enrollment and you're enrolling in a new school. DVIA has its own school number, so it is its own school. So if parents want to remain enrolled in their school of enrollment, then I would recommend that you register for the full-time Duval Home Room. If you're fine changing your school to Duval Virtual Instructional Academy, then I recommend registering through DVIA. Middle school. Middle school is the one grade band that keeps me up at night. One, it, it, they're, 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 they're not young children and, but they're not high school students, they're not mature. So it's, it's, it's been very tough trying to figure out how can we support our middle schools in, in a way of creating a safer reopening as well as accommodating the needs of our middle school students. And so we, we struggled, the, the middle school principals, we, we had a lot of conversation and we, we landed on scenario number two. Students in grades six through eight will participate in a hybrid model of face-to-face and online instruction based on various, it says various options outlined below, but we finally have settled on sixth grade, sixth graders will come to school four days a week, face-to-face. It, the one day that they're not coming to school will be Wednesday. It will be a set, consistent day so that parents can put it on their calendar. Seventh and eighth grade will come to school three days per week, face-to-face. It is the same three days. Consistency is really what drew the, the most support for this option is that when parents know, okay, it's ev, this day every week, then it's much easier to know that I can get my life scheduled around this, this calendar. So seventh grade, and you won't want me to list their days, but seventh grade will come three days and eighth grade will come three days. And the one day that sixth grade is not there, seventh and eighth grade is there. So if, if you're quick on figuring out math, you would know that is sixth grade, sixth grade and seventh grade on Monday, sixth grade and eighth grade on Tuesday, Wednesday is seventh and eighth, Thursday is sixth grade and seventh grade, and Friday is sixth grade and eighth grade. That's been seared in my brain. So that's why I've got it memorized.
For, for Duval Home Room, if parents choose to take that option, what is the parameter around opting in or opting out?
The criteria will be sent out when we put out the registration, but our goal is that you register for at least some, nine weeks. So that you commit. It isn't, well, three days, I, I want to be at school and two days, I want. No, you commit five days a week that you're on Duval Home Room.
For a whole life.
And so if a family says, well, I did want to commit nine weeks and then the seventh week they want to come back, we're never gonna say, no, of course, come back and enroll in your school. But it's not a, oh, I can do some this week and some next week. It is a commitment that you're keeping your child at home and they're receiving their instruction through Duval Home Room.
And the plan is to sort of reevaluate that every quarter or allow parents to reevaluate that every quarter with minimal exception?
Yeah, on the last slide, everything we're doing will be reevaluated at the end of each quarter.
And the next thing I hear coming, that I can imagine, is what about those families, especially in our middle schools, where they have siblings? So now I have, you know, I have a seventh and an eighth grader or I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader. Is there an anticipation that there would be any exception made? I, I don't know feasibly how that could possibly work, but I would imagine you guys have thought about some of these.
There are exceptions in every single option. For example, low-incidence self-contained ESE students. If they're in middle school, we're recommending that they go to school five days a week. So that is an, an exception because, one, they have, many, many of these students have OTPT. And though we've done a wonderful job with Duval Home Room, many of those services probably weren't as effective when they were being delivered through telehealth, what we call telehealth, versus them being at school. So we will give schools flexibility, but this is the basic option. So you have some magnet schools such as LaVilla. They're, as long as they work it out in this format that seventh and eighth are there three days a week for the, for the baseline and sixth grade is there four days a week. We want to give them flexibility because their magnet might dictate some things that they need to do differently. But this is the basis. So as the option for virtual for middle school, sixth grade only will be allowed to enroll into the regional Duval Home Room. The reason sixth grade is because elementary certification goes up to sixth grade. So even if we don't have very many sixth graders, we, teachers are certified to teach sixth grade. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade families who prefer online can also go to DVIA. But DVIA is the only option for grades seven through twelve. One, because we're doing hybrid, even though teachers will be coming to work five days a week, some days they may not be face-to-face with their students, but they're teaching their students on Duval Home Room. It is, it was just almost virtually impossible to create a secondary Duval Home Room and keep hybrid going on at the same time. For high school, students in grades nine through twelve will participate in a hybrid model of face-to-face and online ins, I turned it, in, instruction. What you see is an example, high school, their flexibility is, is much greater because it can't be just straight ninth grade because you have some ninth graders who are taking tenth and eleventh grade courses. But every school know, they've worked out their schedule that you have, you can't have ninth and tenth collapse together on the same day. Because if you think about transportation, who's probably riding the bus, bus the most? Ninth and tenth graders. Many times eleventh and twelfth graders, they might, they find a way to get to school. And they, you know, they, they have ways to get to school versus our ninth and tenth graders. And if you go back to our ridership, who, who was the largest ridership? It's high school. High school is the largest ridership and it's because a lot of our dedicated magnets, these students are traveling across the, the city to get to their school. So even though it shows ninth and twelfth and tenth and eleventh, it is not that pure. It, 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 some, some days they may have tenth grade when it's really a ninth grade, but every school is working with the high school regional superintendent and they're mapping out their schedules. Schools like Douglas Anderson and Andrew Jackson that are dedicated magnets that have programs that need some massaging about who should be at school, what day, they have that flexibility. So every school may not look the same, but what will be the same is that every grade level or every student will come to school two days a week. For nine, if, if, in this example, ninth and twelfth, their two days a week was Monday and Thursday. Tenth and eleventh, their two days a week is Tuesday, Friday. Wednesday is a Duval Home Room day for all students, unless a school is doing something unique. We did give them flexibility that, you know, maybe you're bringing in the swim team to do something special with, but Wednesday is their one day if you need to do something interesting. It just can't include transportation. In addition, it can't impede the deep cleaning that will happen on that campus every Wednesday. Our high schools are our largest campuses with the largest number of students and we feel like that deep cleaning needs to happen more frequently on our high school campuses versus our, our other campuses. So Wednesday is also an opportunity for custodial staff to get into those schools and, and really do some deep cleaning. Thought you had a question.
The question that's lingering in the back of my mind right now is after-school activities and after-school programs.
Yes, we, we are doing miracle work here. We will have activity buses for the high schools so that on the day that you're not there and you, you're, you're participating in some actor, school activity and you don't have transportation, you can get to one of the activity buses. So the activity buses will run at noon, somewhere in that time span, Paul. I see you looking at the back of my head. And students should get to school by one so that they're, they're, they're gonna be there a little bit earlier than practice starts, but the schools are working through that process and they will work out that process and schedule.
And for elementary schoolers, extended day options?
Extended day will run as normal. I say as normal, with the social distancing, they will need, the schools know that they may have to provide more space so that they can space out the students. But we will offer extended day, gear up, team up, all the different communities and schools, all those partners that run after-school programs, we will still.
That's huge. I mean, I just think that that's really important for parents to know that they're, especially for the little ones, they will be able to be at school and cared for so that they can be at work.
ESE centers and alternative schools. Those schools will be five days a week. Again, we believe those students need that support. Many of those students have services that, again, we did, we did a great job, but they need more face-to-face. For our ESE centers, for many of those students, we will utilize face shields instead of face coverings because of med, med frag and other medical needs that they may have. But every bottom-line delivery system, we tried to find those anomalies and put something in place to support those anomalies. Just to reiterate, grades seven through twelve, their virtual option is DVIA. For our ESE or alternative schools that are utilizing five days a week, they have a way to do Duval Home Room if a parent just feels uneasy about sending their child to school. So the ESE department will be working with those ESE centers and, and the, the high schools and middle schools that have low-incidence self-contained classrooms. They will be working with them on what to do if a, if a family says, well, I, I don't feel comfortable, but I want to remain with this school. We will get the, their services done through Duval Home Room. Though we've put a lot in place as a district, there are still many details that have to be worked out at the school level. And so each school will have to develop a number of procedures because every school is not the same build, it doesn't have the same layout. Schools run their buses a little differently. Some schools drop buses off at the front of the school, other schools drop the buses on the side. So everything can't be set by the district. We need schools to play a pivotal role in this. So every principal will have to establish procedures for student intake and daily student temperature checks. So the, the school, once they establish that procedure, we, we will request that they turn that information into their regional superintendent. They have to ensure classroom and learning spaces are set up with appropriate distancing guidelines. Every elementary school will need to develop a schedule for frequent handwashing throughout the day, making sure the desks are six feet apart. That the dividers that we provide, that they're installed in the right place and that we are addressing any concerns for student groups when they want to do small group, like having five students at a table. What, what's your, what's your plan for that? Safe storage of facial coverings or other personnel, personal items. When we say safe storage, what's your process? Do students put, are students required to have their facial covering in a baggie and it sits on their desk just so that everybody knows? What is, what's your procedure and what is the makeup of the culture of your school during this COVID-19? Create a plan for employee intake. Even though we're developing the app, they still have to take employees' temperatures. They have to identify isolation rooms for students with fevers or who appear to be sick, and that also includes employees. Create a school-wide transition plan. How will students move about the school? What will you do for lunch? How are you doing recess, restrooms, small group learning, before and after-school programs? All of those things that play into the social distancing aspect. Cafeteria. We are not putting any barriers in the cafeteria, but every school is required to arrange their cafeteria so that they have six feet of social distancing able to be applied. So we've been using Ocean Way Middle School as our model school as we've worked through this process. And the principal at Ocean Way set her cafeteria up with six feet apart. That cafeteria normally could seat somewhere close to five, five to six hundred students in that cafeteria. Under the guidelines of social distancing, she can now only serve a hundred and sixteen students in that cafeteria. And with two-thirds of her students at school, she's already said, I'm gonna have to have six lunches. Lunch will be starting pretty early in the day and going pretty late in the afternoon. So schools have to develop a plan. What's your plan? Maybe your plan includes that some students eat in the classroom with their teacher. Is Ms. Brady shooting arrows at the back of? We have to have that conversation. Or, you know, some students are eating in, in the classroom, other students are eating in the cafeteria. They have to develop that plan on how they're going to do transition. They also have to develop a plan of movement around the school. One of the things that secondary is concerned about, when you have a three thousand student high school such as Sandalwood, there is no transition plan because they're all, there's no way to say you're gonna, how you're gonna corral three thousand students and ensure that they all walk in one direction or only walk one way down the hallway. That is why the hybrid model is being utilized for our secondary schools because the challenge of implementing social distancing is, is just insurmountable. And we believe that utilizing the hybrid model gives schools the, the, sort of the environment where they can create social distancing and make their schools safer for everyone. We still have to continue, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. So when we're looking at the student intake and daily temperature check procedure, I have the largest elementary school and the largest middle school in my, in my district. And so I'm thinking about the numbers of people that have to move through these buildings, hopefully somewhat efficiently. And I really appreciate and respect the opportunity for building leaders to have some autonomy about how they run their schools. My concern, and I, and I think I accurately understand perhaps their concern as well, is just the people, the personnel to do this work so that they can get bodies moving through the door and where they need to be without crowding together. And so I'm wondering whether or not, and you sort of mentioned that you hadn't really talked, talked to Ms. Brady yet.
Oh, no, we have.
We, okay.
No, we just have, no, we not, yes, we really have talked to Ms. Brady.
Oh, good, okay.
No, no, we have.
And I don't know whether there is. And I don't know whether there is discussion about, you know, how do we stagger people? And I know duty-free, um, is important, you know? And I wanna respect our, I wanna respect our teachers and I wanna respect their opportunity to be safe and healthy as well. But where do we have flexibility? Is there an opportunity to offer stipends or something like that? I mean, I don't, I don't know what it is that we ask. Whether it's an hour, you know, come in an hour early. This is, I'm speaking your language, Ms. Brady, is that what's happening? But I, I just, I know that they have concerns about moving people. And if they can't ask staff to come in early, who do they have do it? And so I don't know. Again, I appreciate the autonomy for each building, but I believe that they're gonna need some support in some direction, you know, from the district to help put these pieces in place. I think lunches are gonna be another big concern, especially for the very large schools that are over capacity. Most of the elementary schools in my district are, you know, at or over capacity. And so I just, I want them to be able to make decisions, but I hope that we'll be able to support them through that. Is Tart, is Tartwell's gonna offer any flexibility? So is there an option for grab-and-go versus going into a, a cafe?
Tartwell's is gonna work with us. Um, we're already scheduled to have breakfast in the classroom. So, you know, it's, it's not like a unique train of thought that, that the students would eat in the classroom. It is ensuring that, one, we respect our contract and our, we respect our relationship with DTU and ensure that we're following that contract. But we have, we have principals who, who are problem solvers. And we're giving them this first swipe at, you tell us how you're gonna do this. And if we come back to you and say, well, I, mm, you can't do that. Or if somebody sitting behind me says something to me, you know, they can't do that. So then we're, we come and support them. Very much like two schools that use co-teaching a lot. We went to those two schools individually, and I say we. Mr. Sores went to those two schools. And they've worked out how they're going to implement five days a week with all the students there. And they know now that you're not gonna be able to do co-teaching because we cannot have 36 students in a, in a classroom. But working with them, they came up with some solutions. We added some, uh, solutions and now they have a plan. So right now, the principals know that they've, they've gotta tell us, what's your plan? And we'll sort of vet that plan, poke holes in the plan, go back and change things. But they're, they have stepped up to the plate. And every time I meet with them, they, they, I continue to get, we've got this, we, we understand, we know what we have to do.
Sure, I, I appreciate that.
And that's why we, that leads into the next slide, continued collaboration. This plan could change tomorrow if we receive new information. Heck, maybe we have a vaccine and it's all gonna be over with. Of course, this would, this would change in a heartbeat. But we are prepared. I think we've developed these levels of empowerment and levels of collaboration that no matter what changes, we think we're prepared to make the change. Whether that's working with, um, DTU or having the, as Ms. Brady announced, the, the three forums or, or clinics that we will meet with teachers. Our goal is to ensure that we are creating our schools as a safe place or a safer, that really is the better word, safer, um, than we, that we can possibly provide. Here at this office, when we started, we made sure every employee went through their training process. Once they've completed the training, they had to sign off that says, I understand. They, and we had to do a reminder about the second week, reminding people, hey, when you're moving about the building, you need to be wearing your facial covering. And everyone just has taken on this attitude, we have got to get through this. So how, what can we do to support one another?
So our building leaders that maybe are still having questions or some of our younger building leaders that, you know, are still trying to get their feet under them, running, you know, a building, they can turn to the district, their leadership, their region supports are gonna help get the people in place, right?
Absolutely. They, not only their region support, but the support that's sitting behind me, all the way to the back. We, we've all stepped up and said, we've got to, to help. Um, with our high schools, this two-day-a-week and, and moving, the possibility of moving to a seven-period day. You know, I had to turn and look at Cory. These, these, these are whippersnapper, they've never done a seven-period day schedule. And I, here me, who's done it a number of times, thinking how easy it is. But Cory said, Dr. Green, you don't have to worry, we got it, we're, we're gonna help them through this. I said, okay. So we will continue collaboration. Uh, currently, we have a survey to determine specific needs within schools and classrooms. That's out to all of our principals. Uh, they actually have to tell us every single classroom, what's in their classroom, what are the needs of that classroom? So that, um, as we move forward with, uh, the building of the guards, the desk guards and installing, we know exactly what school Crystal Springs needs versus what Chet's Creek needs. And, and we're getting that information from principals now. We're surveying the determine method of school participation. In July, we will, uh, put out the option of Duval Home Room and letting parents know that this is available. We're working, uh, now on developing that registration. What does that look like? How, how do we get the information out to parents so that they know that it's open and that it's available? So we'll continue to work through that process. And, um, meetings, teacher forums, focus groups to identify needed support. We may think that this is a very comprehensive plan and we miss something. We're gonna constantly review our plan and vet this plan to ensure that, that we have the best resources and the best, um, opportunities for our employees to feel that they can come back to work. They feel that we are putting everything in place to keep them as safe as possible as well as our students. So what I'm going to do, and Dr. Krisner doesn't know it, but I'm turning it over to her. When we come back, we still have a lot of thing, other things to, to deal with. We talked about academics, making sure that we figure out that learning loss gap and closing it. But our students have been through a lot and, and, and they've been away from us. They, you know, you, you feel like, uh, they went on vacation, never to return. And then August 10th, they all show up and we should just go back to normal. And we know that that is not the case. We know that that will not be the case. So students' social, emotional state is going to be important. And not only students, but for our employees as well. We've not seen our teachers since spring break. So we have two levels of intervention that we need to do to ensure that when we open back up, that we're gonna open up in, in a safe space and that people feel like they're cared for and that we're going to support them moving through that. So, Dr. Krisner, I'm gonna allow her to cover these two slides. Are you still back there? Okay. You could've been like Paul. When we turned for Paul, he was gone.
Paul has a tip. To stay on. Okay. I, I really appreciate talking about this. This is, this is one of my favorite things to talk about. So our, um, Health and Physical Education Department and our Behavioral Support Team have been working very diligently on the mental and emotional well-being's, um, supports for both our employees and for our students when they return. We understand that this has been a difficult time and, um, we wanna make sure that we're prepared um, at all three levels, tier one, tier two, and tier three. So we are, um, we received, uh, the preliminary draft of this, of the SEL Back-to-School Packet. And there's actually an employee survey that asks them how they're doing and provides all kinds of resources and information along the way that they can use. So we do have the, the employee survey already ready to go. We have support for students, um, through those surveys with important links and phone numbers for other resources. And then, um, we have self-care supports for all. We have the Return to School Wellness, um, Initiative for Students embedded in our curriculum guides for both Health Education and for Wellness Wednesdays. And then our Full Service Schools are geared up. We know that our referrals were about the same this year, but the follow-ups were actually, there were fewer follow-ups. And I know that a big part of that was the telehealth. Students indicated that they didn't feel comfortable with sessions while there were people in the background watching. And so that was a big issue. And then it was difficult to get parent permission in an online fashion, even though telehealth was, um, it was approved for use. It was not as, people didn't take advantage of it. Our students didn't take advantage of it. And our, and our EAP program didn't get taken advantage of like it could have. And so we wanna make sure that that's there for our, both our employees and for our students. And then, um, again, Wellness Wednesdays have targeted, um, for both employees. There's employee resources and student resources. And this year, they've paired it with the Character Education Required Instruction. Their, um, they are, their theme is "Developing a Culture of Care," Victor. So they played on that and it's, and it embeds those character traits that were, that are required instruction with a social and emotional learning for students in pre-K all the way through 12. So the three tiers of, of, um, support. Tier three is for the individual or very few. And that includes individual counseling and individual therapy, either through a school-based, school psychologist or a school counselor or, um, through one of our licensed, uh, clinical mental health counselors through full-service schools. The second tier are for some, and that includes group counseling, either through school counselors or school psychologists or through our full-service schools, um, licensed providers. And then that we have our tier-one universal support for all. That includes professional learning for our employees, our school-based employees with youth mental health first aid. And then also direct instruction through Wellness Wednesday Welcome Back, which is a video and accompanying resources. And then also we have the Culture of Character that they're developing now. That's, that they rolled out today at the Principals Institute.
So that covers our safer for reopening. But this last slide just is needed to remind everyone that things could change. We, this is still fluid. We've looked at other school districts, reopening plans, and it, it spans the gamut. Um, when I looked at Browards, uh, they had a different plan for every child at elementary. I mean, they showed an example of a family could be coming back and one child comes back five days a week and the other child comes three days a week. And so I really think it depends on what is the level of positive COVID-19 cases in your district that really impacts how you reopen. Down south, they have more cases, double the cases we have in Duval. But Duval has almost triple the cases of our surrounding counties. And I think it's just very important to keep reiterating that we keep our ear to the ground and listen to what's happening at the state level, continue to listen what's happening at, you all have SSBA, I have FADS. Um, we continue to get additional information. And as we get additional information, it has the ability to impact what we are doing. But I do wanna say that, uh, working with Ms. Brady, she continues to, uh, support us strongly. I'm hoping if I, I'm sucking up to her now. But she is telling the truth about the resources. Duval is well ahead of most school districts. We have districts asking, uh, she got a call, I got a call from another school district asking, how do you get, um, hand sanitizer? And I, I said, well, I'll transfer you to my Assistant Superintendent of Operations, but I'm, I'm not sure you can get the level of, of resources that we have at this late date. And one might think, well, you still have almost two months before school starts. But ordering, uh, face shields and it, it is taking quite a bit of time. And to think that we are at this spot, that, that this is such a major priority, i- is, it's almost like, um, The Wizard of Oz. You kind of feel like, click your heels, there's no place like home, there's not. And you keep clicking and this is home now. It was definitely eye-opening to see, uh, face shields for small children. And we ordered them because we wanted them to be comfortable and that they could fit. But that's what they're, they're making that as.
So weird.
Yes. It's very, very strange, but it is, this is where we are. So, um, we will work on communication to families. That's, that's really the whole month of July. That's, a lot of that is communicating to families, letting them know their options. Tracy and his team, Dr. Pierce and his team is creating a specific website where we'll have the PowerPoint, we'll have all the information. We want it to be sort of a one-stop shop. So if you decide you want to register for Duval Home Room, you can do it right there at the website. Or at least the link will take you to where you need to go. Or register for DVIA, which we already have on our website. And it will help parents, um, kind of make decisions. The goal is to have the website to be very informational so that the details are there. Parents know how to get their calendars in order. They know what days of the week their secondary children will be attending school face-to-face and what days of the week they'll, they'll be participating in Duval Home Room. So that is the end of my presentation.
Well, Dr. Green, I, I think we all applaud your work and your staff for the details. I mean, I mean, all the little things that you can't think about. I think you touched on it and we know it's fluid and things could change. But, uh, we thank you very much for outstanding job that your staff has done in preparing for the reopening of the schools at this August the 10th. And this, this opening, this reopening would be unlike any we've seen before. So, uh, thank you very much again.
Can I also say that it's really remarkable what y'all do? And I know you do it because of the kids. And, but I can't believe there's any, uh, place in Florida that, um, is, could even do half of what y'all do in the amount of, uh, in the amount of, um, time you've had. So I, it's, it's amazing.
And we thank, uh, our teachers' union too for being cooperative with us. And, uh, we gotta suck up to her every now and then, you know? But Terry, we really do, we thank you. And we know you care about our students and you care about our employees. And, uh, we, that shows in all that you do and, and all that you say.
Um, I have one more question and then a brief statement. Um, so I know that we're giving the schools a lot of autonomy to work through some of these details. I know you said we're gonna continue to collaborate and have some other conversations with meetings and forums. Is, who will, how will parents know what the final decisions are for their school and the directions be given? And when can we expect that?
For, there's really only a few schools that are anomalies. And so those schools will communicate directly to their parents. For the most part, everything will be stated on that website. So parents can see the basic information. We are working with schools. They, they wanna know how will they do orientation? And so a lot of that, we have to work with the principals to say, okay, if you're doing virtual orientation, we need to start getting that schedule ready so that we have enough lines that everybody can do their own virtual. lines that everybody can do their own virtual orientation." Or if you want face-to-face, you have to follow all these guidelines. So we're going to give them options that if you want face-to-face, you got to be able to prove that you can keep sixty, all the things that would be for social distancing, because the more people we let enter into the school who are not the ones who go there every day, the more, the more deep cleaning we have to do to those schools. And I need to reiterate, deep cleaning is not the same as sanitizing or disinfecting. Deep cleaning, they do some other things and it is, it is costly. So we want to make sure if you're going to have people from the outside come into the building, that you have to follow these rules. And that's how they're getting, how they would get most of their information, but if their schedule is very different than we've told those schools, you need to talk to your families directly, because I don't know it to the level you know it, because you've made some modifications. And I think when we say modifications, if, if it's middle school, the days of the week don't change. They're still coming three days a week. They might have a different schedule within that timeframe, but the, the basis of the framework does not change.
Sure, and that makes sense. I'm thinking, you know, as I think about the different groups, teachers are going to want details. They're going to want to know how every little thing works, and our parents are going to want choices. They're going to want to know what, what their options are, and if it doesn't work like this, when can I do that and how soon can I know, because I, I need to get a plan for my sanity as quickly as possible. And so, you know, as we continue to move through this, those are the two things that I think will just stay in the back of my mind, that I hope that we can try to roll out as quickly and communicatively as possible. And then finally, I would just say.
There will be a one-pager going out today, because I have a media outlet sitting in here. So parents will get a one-pager and teachers will get a one-pager today.
Okay.
So that they, they get the basic of the information. And then we'll tell them, okay, the next level of information will come out at this time and locate it in, on this website, or it'll be emailed to, whatever the way we're communicating with them, it will, we will work through that.
I would just ask again for everybody, all those involved, whether that's, you know, our teachers or our parents, to remember that this has been a very difficult process, that there is no part of the process that was gone through without thinking about your needs or your desires, or how this would impact you, or how this might be a struggle for your personal family. And it's, it's not an easy thing to accomplish and to pull together for, you know, 150,000 humans. And so again, I, I thank you to staff. As families, I've, I've heard a lot, "Well, what about my job? You know, I'm going to have to be able to do this X, Y, and Z to be able to go to work." And I hope that our people in the community and our private industry will remember that we are doing the best we can to provide an education for students, and that if at some point in time a school needs to shut down, or a classroom needs to shut down, and those children need to stay home, that our private industry, remember that sometimes the people working for them are parents, and they have an obligation, and we would never put an undue burden on parents to keep children home unless it was necessary. And so I know that that's been a concern that I've seen floating around that has come to me directly, and I hope that as a community, we all continue to remember that this is about the health and safety and welfare of all of us as we make these very difficult decisions throughout the school year. So thank you all again for all of this work.
Chairman Jones, I need to just remind the board of the special board meeting we need to have for the desk guards that RFP went out, and the time is of the essence.
Right. We have four members here. Had you, and we need to have as many as possible. When do you look to have a special?
June 30th.
Pardon?
June 30th.
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
Tuesday.
That's Tuesday, okay. It's a week from today, okay. You can do that, you want to do that in a morning meeting or afternoon?
Do it in the morning, move on, and enjoy the rest of their day.
And I'm sorry about the delay.
Go ahead and schedule that.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday the 30th at nine o'clock. You want to do 10 or nine?
Nine thirty.
Nine. I mean, our meetings are usually at nine.
Okay, we'll keep it at nine. Please let the other three, a special board meeting. We'll have it here in the client so we can do social distancing. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, June the thir, thir, June the 30th. Okay, thank you. Last item on the agenda is governance, if anybody has any governance.
I have a couple of things. I know it's been a long meeting. Just one thing I want to point out, I'd like to applaud the district. I actually stopped at a school bus that was stopped in my neighborhood yesterday and impressed that the district is still sending out school buses for the summer meals program, also formerly known as summer lunch program. I think that that's commendable, that we're reaching out to the community. Pardon me?
You used to work for the?
I did, for the Children's Commission, now the Kids Hope Alliance. And so I remember that, and so I just thought it was really neat that school buses were going out, and I don't know that the community knows that, because I put it on a community page and got all kinds of responses, and they had no clue why the bus was sitting there. So thank you for, for that. The other thing I wanted to just talk about, and it might be a discussion for later, is that we did receive a letter from the Schultz Center requesting the opportunity to renew that contract. And I think it's very important for us to have a plan for what we, our vision is for the Schultz Center. I know I've heard different ideas floated since I've been on the board, and I'm just wondering, well, you know, if we can address that, and also kind of wrap into that, because conversation I had heard, it hasn't been like an official board discussion, but you know, you hear rumblings of would we ever consider moving the district office to the Schultz Center and taking, using that facility? And I bring that up, I just think that that's a conversation, even if it's not part of the Schultz, that might be worth having as a, as a board as we move forward with the master plan, to consider where the district office fits in that long-term, in the next five to 15 years, because I think that the drumbeat is going to continue to get louder and louder as this property becomes more and more desirable. And I would like to see us be more, play more offense than defense in that process.
Thank you. The drumbeat is loud, but it's loudly that they want us downtown. If you would, since you're on the Schultz Board, would you chair that, work with Ms. Chastain and somebody from superintendent's office?
Dr. Chris.
And reviewing that lead so we can come back with a recommendation? I think.
Can I follow that? As in about this? So, huh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you through? So when this whole thing with the Schultz Center, and I have a stor, historical that I want to give all of y'all as to how it, how it came to be, because Fred, Fred Schultz was just an unbelievable personality. He, I know, had very specific ideas about what he wanted the Schultz Center to be. So I can give this to y'all. This, this actually goes up to when it opened on twenty-two? Anyway, I will give these to you, but I really want to make sure that, and I know there may still be people who remember Fred, I want to make sure that we really look at what his dream was. And in that particular time, when I was doing the alliance, so, you know, I, like I said, I want everybody to be able to, and, and I have no idea if the current, current.
Board.
Yeah, the board, if, you know, where they're getting them, their, and I don't know how many, you know, anyway. So I don't, I don't really know exactly what they're thinking, but it's really, it's important to me that everybody knows what Fred, that was, it was something that he really wanted. And specifically, so anyway, that's just my two, 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 two.
No, thank you for sharing that, because I think it's important, because what, what I brought, I think what you, what you were saying as well, is that it's more than just a lease renewal. But we, you know, if, if we extend the lease, I think we need to, to have a vision or a reason and, and know the length of time, and, and we need to, to your point, look at it more than just, do you renew a lease or not renew a lease, but have a plan and a vision that is in place. And that, I think the historical background is always important.
And it's, yes, because he didn't want a building. He wanted something much more than that. And so, and somewhere along the line, it sort of, something happened. So, yeah, I, I just would like for y'all to have this information so that you can also look at it, and, and I would like to be involved in whatever, because it was my, my life for a while. And so, and Fred actually. Okay, good, thanks. Fred actually ponied up a million dollars for the, for the, for the name, for, so, anyway. The, the other thing I wondered is what's our, when are we going to get started on the naming? Is that a no-no, or?
We will be prepared to present at a workshop in July. However, I would caution that if we're following board process, board policy, it is the district runs the process and the schools go through the process. So at that workshop, what we're going to share is, here, here's what we perceive to be the timeline, and here are the people that will be engaged in that process.
Because, you know, obviously all of us have heard people want to be involved. I know y'all hadn't. And obviously not so, so nice things have been said. So I guess that's kind of, how do we go through that? Or where, I guess, so you're saying timeline would be July?
No, the timeline actually starting wouldn't start till August. We're waiting for students to return, because students have to be a part of the process. And so it really would not start until August.
So if somebody is asking, "How can I get involved?", at this point, do you just say?
I think we're going to make sure we did, what we did with the ACE is that on our website, we post the dates, here are the dates these meetings will be occurring, if you want to attend, then it's all out in the public, it's transparent. But that's part of sharing with you at the July workshop. Here, here's what we perceive to be the process and the timeline that we think it, it would take to go through all the things that are in that board policy.
Okay.
And, and we have a good template in what happened in 2013 with Nathan Bedford, so. And I don't think the policy has changed since that name change, so.
No, it has not. Yes.
All right. Anything else for governance? Uh, I think.
Is that, is that an open forum? I'm sorry, I didn't know Ms. Barnes was still speaking or you were asking anyone.
Boy, remember Smith, I didn't know you was, you was with us.
What did you say?
I, I, I am still here, I wasn't sure if you, Chairman, if you were asking Cheryl if she had anything else for governance, or if you were speaking to any board member.
I was speaking to any board member.
Okay. I like to be in the queue when, when it's the appropriate time, right?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. One, to follow up on Cheryl's question and, and some of the school naming, and I had brought it up at the board meeting last Tuesday evening. I believe that there are at least two more schools that we need to examine and, and open community inquiry on, and so, I don't know, it, it sounds like maybe Board Member Willie is not with us, and I was not sure how much of my comments he heard on Tuesday, since he was on the phone, but just wanted the board to anticipate that I would like for us to also look at Andrew Jackson and Jolly Bow or Jeanne Rabelt as we think about how our values align to our school names. And then the other item, and I understand that we have to, you know, look at that at a regular meeting, and the other item that I had talked to the superintendent about is I would like to request that at an upcoming workshop, that the board hear from the Office of Equity and Inclusion about their work throughout the district, and that we think through, certainly with the superintendent, but that we think through how we can really hear more and engage more and understand better the expertise of that office as we think about the implementation of policy, as we heard from the superintendent at our last board meeting. Dr. Josie and Jackson lead incredible work in that office, but most of the time when we see it as board疏, we're seeing it of, of equity and, or a compliance issue, or a employee discipline issue, quite frankly. And, and I think that there is an opportunity to know more about what that office is doing and potentially be more proactive with our equity and inclusion work as that relates to our governance model of board policy, as well as communications and, and interactions and that kind of thing. So just wanted to make that formal request as well, Chairman, that, that the superintendent have a presentation on our Office of Equity and Inclusion.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Green has heard that, and we will act accordingly. Anything else?
It just won't be Ms. Jackson.
Pat, pardon?
Ms. Jackson won't be the person doing the presentation.
Anything else? Boy, remember Willie, are you there? Oh, he had a two o'clock meeting. I guess I hear Board Member Hershey saying move to adjourn, I hear Vice Chair Anderson saying second. No, no other.
Second.
No, no other discussion, meeting's adjourned. Thank you for your patience and your work today.
Y'all can go home now. No?